The January twenty seventh meeting of the regular meeting of the Plymouth City Council was called to order. We are operating these meetings under a Corona COVID nineteen advisory. Just went to Assembly Bill AB three sixty one. Meeting will be held in person and via teleconference and electronically. Any in person participation by the public is permitted and remote electronic. Public participation is also available in the following ways, city of Plymouth Zoom meeting. And the Zoom meeting address is always published on the agenda. Dial in at one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. Meeting ID eight nine eight two five two seven eight two one three and a pass code of six five two five eight three. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so. During public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom webinar. By dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed above. On the phone use number nine to raise or lower your hand and number six to mute and unmute your phone. That's always a good one to remember, the muting and unmuting. You can submit a written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing your comment to the deputy city clerk. At City Hall, it's listed on the agenda before five o'clock on the day of the meeting. Email public comments will be distributed to the city council and made a part of the official minutes. So I would like to have roll call.
Roll call, council member White.
Here.
Council member Sim.
Here.
Council member Ameruso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfelder.
Here.
Thank you.
And tonight we are honored to have on Boy Scout Troop is sixty three.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Boy Scout Troop sixty three here to lead the flag salute. So as soon as you'd like to to tell, I'll tell, tell everyone to stand up for you.
Oh, we got it.
So could please stand for the flag salute. Valerie, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Joe. Thank you so much. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the city council regular meeting for January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two.
I make a motion to approve meeting as presented. I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Um, take roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, council member White.
Aye.
Council member Sim.
Aye.
Council member Ameruso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder.
Aye.
Thank you.
And item number three on the agenda is public comment. Under government code section five four nine five four dash three. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. By completing and submitting speaker submitted form to the city clerk or following the COVID nineteen advisory instructions. Will be called by the. The agenda when the item will be heard, speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less. And to state name and community of residence, but doing so is not required. It has been suggested to me that we provide some. Older people more time at the podium instead of the three minute limit, and I agree. So we're gonna, we're gonna stretch it out a little bit when we feel the need. So under provisions of government code, the city council is prohibited. From materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Unless it can be demonstrated to be an emergency nature. Or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after posting the agenda. So if anyone would like to speak under public comment, you can make do so now. Um, Raymond, the ST.
We've been having a problem with the city on our rental property on the water sewer bill. And I would like to get some kind of explanation on. Exactly what's going on. We've had a rental property for sixty years in this town, never had any problem. Now they're trying to have the property owner. Be responsible for bills that the city has billed other people. And we've never got noticed now after something, some cases a year or so. They say that's a bill wanting us to pay it. But it, 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 that makes sense to me at all. I'd like to be able to talk to somebody that can fill me in on what's going on.
I remember distinctly, we had long conversation last year was agendized and we had a discussion about that. And it apparently has not been resolved to your satisfaction. So I'd like to be able to set you up with an appointment with staff for the explanation you're looking for. And I'd also like it agendized for a future meeting. So that the council hears what the resolution of that was. So we work out your problem. Okay, Raymond?
Okay.
Thank you. We have Darlene Esti Pravato. And Darlene, I hope I said your name correctly.
You did, you did good Valerie, thank you. Well, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you'll be able to answer them or not Valerie, I pretty hopefully you will. Did the city receive money for a COVID relief for people who cannot pay the utilities during that time?
I would refer that to Michael. Um, I know that we discussed that some of those funds would be available, so.
Yeah, the mayor is correct. There are funds available. There's an application process which is verifying that they meet the requirements because the money get that. Money has not been given to us. We have authority to give money to someone. If they meet each of the state's requirements, in which case then we can reimburse. So we, we aren't sitting on a lot of money, but there is some availability. So specifically, and I think the case you're referring to, we need the renters, actual tenants to come in and apply for those funds.
And who would they see, Michael?
Uh, they can see me if I can have an email address, it's probably easiest because I can send over. The form with all the information I need.
Do you have someone who speaks Spanish?
Uh, we do not.
Okay, so how would a Spanish speaking person who has very little English speaking be able to get that information and understand it?
If I know that the person speaks Spanish and needs it, and I can have the documents translated before I send over, I don't need. Like it's, it's not a letter that's required. It's essentially what I would need is. Documentation of bills and you sign something and basically a verification of income. And a short statement that says they were affected by COVID. It's not incredibly difficult and I, I, I don't think they should have a problem with it. But some way to get them the documents would be pretty much fine.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have a new tenant at a property. They make it come in and they make an agreement with the city for water and sewer services. And I noticed on the application for that. It basically states that they need to complete the information and they are charged the twenty five dollar fee. And then they, it says something about them being charged another fee. For what is a month's first month's billing? Does anybody know what that amount is?
Rex, do you know what she's referring to? I, I'm not sure that we can charge fees for something we haven't provided. It's okay, so we have a deposit, but that should be clearly stated on it that it is a form of deposit and what it's for. And when it would be returned.
Uh, we do have a deposit and every month we're returning deposits from people. Always signing the check for, for that dollar once we get back. Uh, our billing utility, which is Joyce, is very well versed on why and how these are done, including the billing process that. You know, these folks, we had a long, nice conversation today about the, and it's a kind of a, it's a hard situation because in their particular case, as you may recall. They have tenants who rent, they come down and get the water in their name, then they don't ever pay the bill and they leave. The way our ordinance is written is that the property were becoming responsible for that. And that's when we bring to the council, we decided those aren't the tax law. And these folks, we actually made an exception to that. We did not put them on the tax law. Those people came in and did a, a, a condition to make payments and they never did it. So they're kind of, as landlords, you're in a hard spot. And we met today, we'll continue like you suggested, we have the staff to help them work that out. Uh, they now get bills, you know, one of the things that had been mentioned is that when they become delinquent. Not before, but we send a bill to the person who signed up. We send the property owner now an identical bill saying that they're giving, that was at the council request. So we're, we're working towards a resolution, but that's a, it's a tough one when you add tenants that don't pay their bills. Yeah, at least with our current ordinances.
So how, what's that ordinance number? Because I couldn't find it on, on anything online with that and also if you. Are, what was the other thing you were just talking about? The ordinance number would be nice because I can look at that and, and do you know what that is?
If you'll stick around till the end of the meeting tonight, I'll get it for you.
Okay.
It's, it's under the water billing and we can do it. No, it's probably not. I can't do it now.
Right. Well, the water and sewer, um, this form anyway. It, it doesn't give any timeframe as far as how delinquent they have to be before it shut off.
Matt, Mary, do you want me to continue answering your, like, this waiting together because it's really not.
I think setting up the meeting and getting everything, I, I think we really do get your point, Darlene, that you. You really need some assistance here. You need open line of communication.
Yeah.
So one way Rex would be to also have. Uh, Michael, since he's going to be emailing. Provide the ordinance numbers and any other ordinance numbers or related information that Darling's requesting.
Was there a new ordinance done Valerie in regards to this, to the water and sewer?
Not in a very long time, I don't think, but I remember. I remember state law changing quite a while ago and I felt at the time. That we should be providing landlords, owners, information, especially on the sewer side. Because the sewer side is a fixed rate. It's not a fee for service. So I think we should look into that as well.
Okay, because when I talked to Joyce today, uh, we have one delinquent that we had evicted. They're evicted now. This is sitting vacant. I have no problem in paying the water and sewer fees monthly because there are responsibility at this point because nobody's living there to pay them. I will pay that. When I went in today and asked her about that, what happened was she said, anybody who's paid on this bill are going to go towards the delinquent fees. And I said, what do you mean? I don't want to pay the delinquent fees. I want to pay our fees because we have fees due and they're going to be collecting. Interest or penalties on those amounts. So again, I'm getting kind of two different sides to things. I'm not getting the straight answers that I need because I really want to keep our side of being good landlords. But I can't do that if I don't know what the rules are.
Yeah, let's get you a meeting set up. First you'll get the information from Michael, then we'll get a meeting set up. And if you don't get provided with satisfaction, then I'm positive knowing you, we'll see you again next time.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Is there anyone else in City Hall that would like to speak on, during public comment on any matter that is not on the agenda? Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that would like to raise their hand and speak under public comment at this time? Michael?
Nope.
Is there anyone on the phone line that would like to speak? It's the same, isn't it?
Yes, no, I'll.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to close public comments for this evening, but thank you, everyone. Um, item number four, we have no presentations and proclamations. Item number five is the consent calendar items, which include approval of the minutes for January thirteenth, two thousand twenty two. Does the council have any corrections to the consent calendar?
Yes, um, there needs to be a correction on the way that the vote went from there. Not the way that the votes went from there, but the, um, the, the motion to approve. Council member Sims did not second the motion on Peter Ameruso. Peter Ameruso said get it in motion.
And that was the in, we're just the minutes correction.
Just minutes correction.
I had a minutes correction, oh, a couple of minutes corrections also. The spelling of Rocco, kind of, it's kind of important to, that we get people's names spelled correctly. And when you get down to seven point one. When it refers to also having spoken Pat and Jel from Assent spoke. I think we need to strike assent, the in parentheses, assent was awarded the bid. Because we haven't done that yet, so that, that is a misleading information. Does anyone else have anything to add to the consent counter conversation?
I also noticed that, um, on the first page for the moment of silence for Robert Reader. I believe it is R E D E R for the spelling of his last name. Under three public comment. When Ms. Patty Phelps spoke, it says, Ms. Patty Phelps looking for information on when Parkinson Fendell Ridge will. And I think it should have said will be completed. Uh, she was told to contact the developer for that information. And then, um, under seven point one, when John Colburn spoke right after the Baraco correction of the last name. Says commented Baraco and associates have already, and I think, uh, the word completed. Perhaps should be in there. And then finally eight point one, and I, this is just a simple typo. Under the city managers report received nice letter regarding landscaping in Zippadel Ridge from. It's CFO, but I think it should be CFD. Thank you.
Any other comments under the public under the consent calendar agenda item? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with all corrections added.
That's.
We got.
Okay.
Oh, and with, um. Thank you to Maria for doing your best. You just aired it on that. I knew that had to be difficult.
She's still only on the line.
Yeah.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with all of the required changes to the minutes, meeting minutes. Maria, can you take the roll call, please?
Roll call, council member White.
Aye.
Council member Sim.
Aye.
Council member Ameruso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda is a public hearing. So it is to introduce and waive the first reading by title only of an ordinance amending Title nineteen. Of the Plymouth Municipal Code adding chapter nineteen point nine zero, short term rentals. Which institutes a registration requirement and adds an application process, regulations, inspection requirements. Operational standards and prohibitions. At this time, I would open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in City Hall that would like to speak during the public hearing? Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak during public hearing this evening? Michael? Okay, so we, I'm assuming we just leave the public hearing open for the next meeting? Yes.
Yes.
So just to.
Mayor, if I may, uh, you're going to want to, um. You can close the public hearing and we'll, there won't be a public hearing for the second reading. Usually the public hearing is for the first reading. What I would suggest though is you keep the public hearing open for public comment after staff's presentation. And then once you, once there is any public comment, you can close it at that time before council discuss and takes any possible action.
Frank, is it possible to continue it as an open public hearing? So that between the time we have it tonight and it comes back for second reading. That the public still has an opportunity to provide written comments?
Yeah, you can, if you're going to continue as a public, uh, the, the problem with continuing the public hearing is. Right now, the public hearing has been unnoticed that it's an introduction of the first reading. So if, if the council were to vote to approve the item tonight. And you wanted to have a public hearing, the public hearing would have to be renoticed.
Okay.
So I don't, because it would have to, it would have to signify a public hearing for the, for the second reading. So that will be the, and then that's going to require more time and I, I don't know if they have time to do that, if that's what the council wants to do, so. Why don't we get, you know, I'd recommend getting through the presentation, receiving information and then going from there and I can advise, you know, on that after.
Okay, thank you very much. Good information. So I think it's Erin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So if you remember, um, last May, this was originally brought to the council for discussion. It was a combination of a discussion regarding our lack of regulations in place for our short term rentals and then also. By, by getting, uh, regulations in place, it allows us another way to continue to collect T O T. regulations in place, it allows us another way to continue to collect T O T from some of the existing short-term rentals in the community and new ones that come. So we went back to the planning commission and through summer and fall, the planning commission and let's see, we did it in like three or four meetings, um, drafted a set of ordinances. We researched what other local jurisdictions do, and then also some other jurisdictions that have much more robust short-term rental uh, policies and programs in place. And during those meetings, we were able to come up with a draft ordinance, which is attached here. I can briefly go over it. It is an administrative, what we've come up with is it a transferable administrative use permit with an application fee of a hundred and ninety-five dollars. The application would need to be renewed every three years. Um, we also, the the planning commission came up with a cap of five percent of residential units, which currently is twenty-two units within the city of Plymouth that could obtain these permits through research on other jurisdictions. As jurisdictions of similar size have seen problems with too many units within the community becoming short-term rentals, and then it does not leave availability for people that are looking for more traditional long-term rentals. So that's why we felt that the cap was appropriate. Also, within the staff report, you'll see uh, the examples of the total occupancy for these types of units, parking requirements. They also, you're requiring a local contact must be onsite or able to respond to issues within twenty minutes. Uh, and that also to encourage tourism here in the city of Plymouth, that guest information must be provided to all applicants or, I'm sorry, all renters. We have, we currently have a short-term rental that's very popular in the city, and I know they provide all types of information because their goal is to bring people to Plymouth, have them experience all of the gems here in Plymouth and hope that they come back from work. So we want to encourage all hosts to do that so that we can help to advertise other businesses, both locally and in the area. And we also have the application requirements. Again, it's pretty basic information, who the owners are, um, who the contact person is. Make sure we have all of that information available in case there's an issue. And then also some life and safety stuff, the locations of bedrooms, fire extinguishers, um, smoke alarms, things like that. And we, and that must also be posted in the unit. So I can answer any other questions about this. This is in addition to the municipal code, and I think as Frank and the mayor have explained, it's the first reading. Um, and if we are comfortable this, we'll bring it back for a second reading, and then it would go into effect thirty days from that date. Thank you.
Erin, I have a question. It says in the ordinance that there was a public hearing. Uh, did that take place?
Yes, so this on November eighteenth, the planning commission held a properly noticed public hearing. The public hearing notice went to the newspaper. And that was the, uh, required per municipal code. So any amendments to the zoning code must have a public hearing in the planning commission for recommendation to the city council.
I'm sorry, did it take place when?
November eighteenth.
Thank you.
I have a question just because it says length of stay and turnover is none. Um, so there, there is nothing to, I guess, qualify for the definition of a short-term rental. Is it at least lease or a month a month, I should say, or is it uh, week to week?
So in the definition section of the draft ordinance, we do have short-term rental uh, rented for the purpose of continuous overnight lodging for a period of not less than one night and no more than thirty days. So some of the other ordinances that we researched required like a two-night minimum stay. And we didn't think that that was appropriate for Plymouth in this ordinance.
Are there any other council questions or comments regarding the public hearing for short-term rentals? I have one, a couple. And I noticed in looking through it that there, I thought the requirement for the property description seemed a little bit, it require, it's calling for a floor plan, which I thought might be invasive and for some people expensive, rather than doing a property description. Could you let us know why that was included in that way?
Yeah, so that was discussed a lot. Um, the floor plans can be as simple as a hand-drawn diagram of the, of the building. It's also uh, if there are instances where people are renting out bedrooms only and not the entire structure. We want to be able to identify which ones are rented and which ones are not. Uh, we, the planning commission didn't find that it would be cost prohibitive for people or invasive. I think there's some life and safety elements to this that we want to make sure that people are renting out and calling bedrooms uh, appropriate bedrooms and safe places for rentals.
And then I had a couple of other things. Um, the prohibitions, the things that are listed under prohibitions, it that also seems a bit invasive if the um, the landowner and the renters are not exceeding the maximum occupancy that's spelled out in the ordinance. And if they're not violating the municipal code for what is allowable in the city in the municipal code under activities. So um, just those were my thoughts because it seemed like if, if we are calling out that you can't have a wedding in the backyard and there's only two people and they want to get married by themselves, that seems a bit excessive.
I agree.
So that was something that was discussed at length at the planning commission, and this is what they chose to do is to say they are prohibited. Originally, I had in there that there would be a special events type permit for these things to allow some of our properties that could possibly accommodate a larger gathering to be able to hold these events. And the commission, um, this, this is their recommendation. Again, their recommendation to the, the city council, you are the authority of what gets adopted.
Yeah. One of the things that we had talked with the commission, Erin and I talked about is that uh, right when this was being done, there was one of the properties in the community that actually had a wedding. And there was no permit process or anything for them to go through. So they contacted us and said, in the future, if we want to do this, could we? This was an absolute no, but we felt that the council and the city should be able to make exceptions. Have some criteria. So let's say you want to have a wedding and you're going to have fifty people there. We can put conditions on a special use permit for that and say, yes, you can. You've got to have parking, you've got to have toilets, you've got, you know, whatever it might be. This right here is pretty restrictive. And uh, maybe the council would like to look at maybe making it less restrictive.
Well, that was my thought because if it's not in conflict with the, if the activity is not in conflict with the municipal code and you're not exceeding the, the maximum number of people at the residence, then it wouldn't even seem to me they needed a special permit. They would need a special permit if they wanted to exceed the number of people.
So one of the things we did discuss is to have a daytime occupancy and a nighttime occupancy. And I think what I had proposed was three times the amount of people that are allowed in the day. It's gotten a little complicated with, you know, this many bedrooms and this, and that was, um, they did not move forward with that recommendation. So it was something that was discussed because thinking of events like a bridal shower, where you're not, not all guests will be spending the night, but it is appropriate to host fifteen people at a three-bedroom house on a half an acre or an acre. There's not uh, uh, impact to the neighbors for the most part. And then something larger, something that would exceed that daytime occupancy would maybe get a special events permit or temporary use permit to make sure that we are protecting the neighbors and also allowing property owners the right to their property to use it how they want. So.
My question request, um, is there any way of sending this back to the planning commission with directions to kind of tweak or tighten up?
I think Frank can chime in. Um, I think we can make those changes tonight without it going back. So if we are uncomfortable with the language in certain items, we'll just change it.
Maybe we'll over time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe it's not tonight.
Mr. John Colburn.
Hi. Glad to see all of you. And I just, after the staff report, I think a couple of questions came up, you know, why they're coming on. One was uh, uh, I was curious, I, I know there's been a long period of, of dry spell where the T O T people were not paying in their, their T O T taxes to the city. But what kind of percentage we have currently that, that are uh, paying. And the other thing that, it appears to me, I didn't see anywhere where there's a, uh, uh, explain the cost of this uh, uh, action is going to be. Because it's either there's inspection, there's administrative, a lot of administrative costs. Is it going to, is this something that we handle with the current staff? Or we're going to have to let this out to some other big work? What is the cost of this going to be? And is it the cost of it uh, going to be covering, be, being covered by the revenue generator by it? So um, are we just, we're wondering about the two questions for your staff report.
Uh, Erin, I, I do believe that the inspection was only every three years. Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, so what we did is a hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is three hours of staff time, uh, the planning director time, uh, which is about average for, so administrative use permits, all planning permits are cost recovery. What we have found that these smaller permits, they pay their fifty-dollar deposit, and then it's hard to collect the other hundred dollars from them. You know, they've got their permit, they're on their way. So in this case, moving this to a, a flat fee instead of chasing them down for another seventy-five dollars or another hundred and twenty dollars. So that one ninety-five, it accounts for three hours of, of time, plus public notice to the, the um, residents within three hundred feet per municipal code administrative use permit process. And then the sixty-five dollars every three years, which accounts for one hour of staff time.
Does that help answer your question, John?
Yeah, evidently, I'm still wondering, is it going to require another person or is that going to be done by somebody that's already employed?
I think we have plenty of staff to cover that once in three years.
The first time that someone applies, they have to, the drawing, for example, make sure it's one of this, uh, staff will be able to do it. And a lot of it's done internally.
And did you, actually, we have any idea what percentage of people are currently paying?
Well, let's see, zero to a hundred? One percent. We have one T O T person paying their T O T every month. But we've contacted some of the others, eight is what we believe we have. So that, and they are all understanding that as soon as this is done here, they're going to be giving bills for the reivers.
For the reivers?
Yeah, then, then it will become a process.
Yeah, that's, that, that was the amazing thing that they are collecting.
They're collecting, they're not paying. So that was one of the challenges to start this, yes.
Thank you.
Erin, that was one of my other thoughts is that, I mean, in, in documents like this, it's okay to be redundant. And in the first part of the section, it doesn't really mention having to be current in your T O T payments. If they go through the resolution and things deeper, it get deeper in the woods there, you can see where those are requirements. Um, do we need a process for, or do we need to have language that says at step some certain point that your permit will be pulled? And that's what I didn't see any, um, any process where there would be a warning of losing your permit and then your permit being revoked.
So yeah.
Six zero and it's key as a note.
Okay.
Is it right?
Nineteen ninety.
This is.
Without two years in this, this is important. It talks about fines and penalty.
Yeah.
It's, it's it's not a, a warning, but F five, so page nine, the operators to look wait on payment to the city of any fees, penalties, taxes, or any other money related to the short-term rental, including the penalty to transient occupancy taxes. So it does, it does not look like there's a warning process on that necessarily, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing that I can find that you see it is the appeal process. You know, we, on our ordinances, if it's denied, if she were to deny it or something takes place in the middle of it, that's the appeal process. The, most of them, it ends up being, it stays internally and goes from wherever the department has it, it's that denied and it goes to city. I'm not sure how that is they, we may have to resolve that.
So that was discussed at the planning commission, and we had a full section in here regarding appeals of this. The commission did not want that out in here. They wanted to rely uh, on our appeal section in the code because there is an appeal process for use permits, administrative use permits. Uh, nineteen fourteen, nineteen point one four has its own, their appeal process for administrative use permits, so that it relies on that section of the code.
But does this section of the code now refer to that section of the code since it's not included?
It doesn't, but it doesn't have to. I don't believe it has to. There, it, what this section does is lays out the of the permit process, which is an administrative use permit, and then you go to the administrative use permit section of the code nineteen point one four point zero three zero, and that lays out the, the way they are processed, the review process, the findings required, and then also the uh, appeal process.
Okay, but one of my points is that we really want to encourage um, business. And I don't think we really want to make it any more difficult than possible. And we want to make it as incredibly clear and easy to, to get through the process as possible as well. And a lot of people coming in may not, municipal codes are tricky little animals and maneuvering through all of the sections is not an easy thing to do. And it's not quick. So just want us to try to streamline this as much as possible and provide. But one way we might be able to do that is to have a, a little checklist for people, like this is, this will happen, this will happen, this will happen, a, a one sheet that goes out with the applications, and that wouldn't have to be included in here.
And, and we do that with the, the current T O T that it, it's, it's not very good, but you're right, there is, should be a way, and I think it will be, that way, it's on the website. You can click and say, I want to have an Airbnb. Says the basic elements of it, and then refers it to the meat if they need to look up the municipal code.
And when we do send out the um, notice of decision, both to the applicant and to the neighbors, we list the appeal section in there too. So, but I, I do think, I mean, the, the plan, it could be to put together a brochure or a flyer with the application um, showing what they need to submit and other permit code sections. But the T O T will be a big one and the appeal process. Um, I think those are the ones that are mentioned in here. It's fine. It's in a business license requirement.
Right. My biggest concern was that the prohibitions section, just having that be more streamlined in, in compliance with the municipal code and the maximum number. I really liked your idea of daytime maximum being higher than nighttime um, people staying at, at one of the Airbnb's because it's true. You can have a party somewhere and you go out of town for it and not everyone is staying there. So I would like us to consider how we accomplish getting that in there.
So I think this is a question for Frank. Um, if we need to make those changes, and I, I think I understand what you, what would like to see in here, allowing people to have functions there with those daytime occupancy limits, and anything exceeding that maybe would need a temporary use permit. Um, whether that, that comes, comes back and we start this timeline of process new, or if it can be amended. Um, whether that, and that comes, comes back and we start this timeline of process new or if it can be amended. This ordinance can be amended and brought to the second reading with those amendments.
Any, any substantive changes to the ordinance between the first and second reading have, they, they, it can't go to the second reading. You can only make typographical or if there was like Scrivener error type things. But any substantive changes to the ordinance requires a new first reading. If that's what this council decides to do and if that's what they decide to do, I'd recommend that we don't close the public um, hearing. We continue it and we can come back for a first reading with those changes, if that's what the council decides to do.
I think that would satisfy you. Are there any other comments?
Can I just go through, make sure I have? Yeah, so the prohibitions will be uh, well, I guess there won't be.
No.
That was easy.
Yeah, and then, let's see, we'll, we'll put in there somewhere about, where's our occupancy? Where is it? The occupancy, where we're at, the daytime occupancy. Daytime occupancy, which is two, three times the amount of nighttime occupancy. Is that, that's what we had originally discussed at the planning commission.
Yeah, but that's hard, depends on the size of the property. If someone's got three acres, then you do a bigger.
And then anything exceeding that daytime occupancy would require a temporary use permit for a week, that would be more of a considered special event.
Does that satisfy the council's questions for this evening? Okay, we're gonna continue the public hearing until the next meeting. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Erin. Um, item number seven. Item number seven, regular agenda items. Um, seven point one is authorize, authorization of professional services agreement with Ascent Environmental Incorporated. In an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars for the preparation of E I R for the Grillich Ranch subdivision and Forty-Niner Village. R V resort expansion, yeah, I forgot to kick you out. Expansion project and circulation plan revision. And now item, the second element of this is reimbursement agreement between city and project developers for one hundred percent of said E I R related work for the project. I'd like to open it up to the public because it might change some of the questions that, or comments that the council might have. So if there's anyone in the audience that, okay. And even if you don't have one of these. So. Chrissy Cooper is here. Get up there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and fellow residents of Plymouth. My name is Chrissy Cooper, great granddaughter of Edward Grillich. Granddaughter of George and Eleanor Grillich and trustee of the Grillich Trust. And I'm here today on behalf of our family. Before I get started, I want to say I have notes. I, I've lived any, every decision of this project since my grandmother passed away. I'm short and out of time and a lot of details and I really owe it to my family to get these clear and correct tonight. So pardon my reading. We've been waiting patiently for this moment since the annexation of our property in two thousand eight. A project that literally paved the way to Zinfandel Bridge by granting the road easement with the infrastructure beneath it. That crosses our property and that leads to the neighborhood some of you call home. My grandmother also granted an easement on Grillich Trust property outside of town for a future sewer spray field, which the city needs to support future growth. I'd like to give you a brief background of how we've arrived at this point today. It's worth mentioning, this property has been in my family for over one hundred years. Spanning four generations, Eleanor, with the city's blessing and approval, committed the property for development when it was annexed into the city in two thousand eight and zoned for mixed uses as a residential and community development. Sorry, commercial development in the city's general plan. We are committed to working with the city to see it through to completion. The zoning density hasn't changed in ten years and neither has the desire for our family to do our part to protect the integrity of the growth of Plymouth. We are pleased, we are pleased when Chuck Hayes, former owner of the Forty-Niner Village, agreed to be our development partner. Continuing a business relationship between the two families dating back to the mid nineteen seventies when George Grillich sold the land for the resort to Chuck's grandfather. It was important to our family to have a partner that respects the community and shares our desire to develop responsibly. Chuck's family operated the resort for over forty years, contributing millions of dollars in fees to the city of Plymouth. Chuck brought Sun Communities to town and is assisting with phase two of the resort expansion. Sun is looking to invest over twenty million dollars in expanding, upgrading, and improving the resort. Which will significantly increase taxes and fees paid to and for the benefit of the city. We have received offers from Dollar General and other developers that we turned down because their visions were not aligned with ours and not in the best interest of this community. Our team consists of engineers and consultants with extensive experience in the amateur county and the foothills. But more than that, they live in and appreciate the uniqueness of the foothills and share our vision for the project. We were also mindful when choosing our team to try and keep the dollars spent local. In response to concerns from affected Zinfandel residents regarding our proposed map. We provided an opportunity for three homeowners to purchase additional acreage behind their homes to offer a buffer. They, all three accepted. Additionally, our team listened and responded to the concerns of having an R V, the R V resort expansion orders in Fendel Parkway. After multiple meetings and new drawings, we were able to come up with a plan to have the expansion lived away from the parkway. The Grillich family has always considered ourselves good neighbors. Now, as we enter our fourteenth year since we started this project. We are still committed to continuing our efforts and finding common ground to see this project through. We started this process with Sun more than two years ago. We have proven themselves to be good partners. We bring resources to the table and Forty-Niner Village R V Resort has always been and will remain far into the future a predominant generator of T O T funds and fees. We believe that this mixed-use development is good for the city and a project whose time has come. We affirm our commitment in developing a compatible mixed-use project for the benefit of all of all. And respectfully ask for your vote in favor of hiring the E I R consultant recommended by staff and moving this process forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have a request to speak from Kevin. And could you state your last name and spell it for the deputy clerk?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I know, Kevin Shepard. All the time. Good, good evening, Mayor Heinfeldt. My name is Kevin Kepper and my name is spelled K E M P E R. And I am the attorney for the Grillich Trust and representing the applicant tonight in this process. Um, but we've had the opportunity to look at the, the proposal that was submitted by Ascent. And we believe it's a strong one and we'd heartily recommend that the city council approve their proposal and enter into a contract. And tonight give staff the authorization to do that because this project really needs to move forward. The applicant has been really patient with the, the process. But there are definitely some timelines that govern this under CEQA. Uh, under Public Resources Code two one one five one point five, the city has a year from the date that the application is deemed complete in order to certify finally I R. Um, in the case of this project, that determination regarding the completeness of the application occurred in August of two thousand twenty-one. Which gives the city until August of two thousand twenty-two to certify finally I R. But, you know, now we're at the threshold of getting an E I R preparer under contract. And under that same CEQA section, it's provided that within forty-five days after the notice of preparation, the city should have the E I R preparer under contract. And that, that slipped quite a bit and, you know, and I'm not here to reverse engineer the reasons for the delay, but um, as we're standing here tonight, we really need to move forward. It's really important to get this project going. Um, again, we're confident with the qualifications of Ascent. And, you know, they're now, based on their proposal targeting heading draft F D I R by August of next year, which I think would make up a lot of the distance on the statutory timeframes we're talking about. But that process needs to begin now and hopefully um, there aren't any significant unanswered questions. I, I would submit that if there are concerns about the ascent proposal, that we have that discussion tonight and try to get to a resolution on it. But again, I believe it's a strong proposal. We're confident that they'll do a sublime job on getting a sustainable document prepared. We look forward to working with them along the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, now I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else that didn't provide a comment card that's in City Hall that would like to speak on the agenda item.
Hi, John Cooper. Uh, yeah, when this came up two weeks ago, a big, one of the big issues was um, in regards to the, the circulation plan. And the circulation plan being part of the general plan. Um, and it was, you know, suggested many times in the past that there would be update to the general plan and that has not been done. And the circulation plan being included in this uh, in this special services agreement, I believe is, is uh, not only uncommon, but it's commonplace. Uh, I believe your, your circulation plan should not be a part of any development agreement or anything else rooting towards um, that any of those developments should be done strictly on the unbiased uh, situation and uh, along with the general plan. Uh, it could be done uh, without doing the general plan, but it needs to be done um, exclusively by itself, it's through the planning commission. And, and not exclude the planning commission or the errands on, by the circulation plan itself. Uh, the, one of the big concerns I have about the circulation plan is uh, it is, it has been uh, known for some time that it was a weakness to have this street uh, go through the background. However, um, which, in, in this application that is brought before you. It should go, no alternatives and no maps or what, what currently exists in the circulation plan or uh, what might be proposed. I was able to pick, uh, pull up a, a map of the proposed subdivision, a greater subdivision and, and the circulation element that that is sure were annexed out through a channel route, which was not part of the previous circulation plan. Uh, I'm concerned about uh, moving forward without, without public hearings itself. In regards to changes in the circulation plan, it might include that, that portion without proper public input. And especially to the property owner Mary for shirts. Uh, I've had some discussion with Mary, she's uh, um, realizes that at some point in time they might try to, to negotiate whether up to this point in time uh, they have done. And uh, but I found out recently that they all, they have been doing surveys for her property and and uh, other uh, archaeological research, so through this uh, through that property. So I'm wondering what the difference would be uh, if the property was in the circulation plan or not, or not. Um, if it is in the circulation plan, does that give the um, applicant uh, the power to use eminent domain? Uh, because it is in circulation plan, does that affect any of that legally? Or what the, the difference would be? But I just don't see the need uh, to, to change your circulation plan without going through the whole process again. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this agenda item before we turn it over to staff? And I will, um, after staff does a presentation, I will quickly go back again because you might get questions on that basis.
Can I speak?
Yes, not yet. I thought I'd have Aaron do the staff report.
Well, my, my, mine is not necessarily a question, it's a slight history lesson.
Okay.
So it's kind of has, just kind of moved by with the subset was to say. So, you know, going back five years or so. Um, you know, Jeff tried to put on the agenda the circulation plan. You know, amendment, which was shot down because the I M Band was doing their subdivision, said that they would like to kind of come in with us and, you know, so how they're gonna affect our streets as they build out their subdivision to their, for the people. And, and I got met with a, a swift, a swift, heck no. So this would have been already updated in a more recent timeline. If we had handled the situation when we should have and not just injured because of outside things. So that's just one minute.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I did want to note that the circulation plan, and Aaron will, will refer to this. That it has not been updated since two thousand and eleven. Is that correct, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, you're up, Aaron.
Okay, thank you. So not, not much has changed from, from when this was here last time. Again, um, it's, it's two things. It's a professional service agreement or it's authorizing the city manager or it does need to enter into a professional service agreement with Ascent. And we do have Pat Angel here from Ascent who can answer questions regarding their, their proposal if needed. And then also reimbursement agreement with the applicant, Grillich Ranch Trust and Sun Forty-Niner Village R V. Um, and that would be to cover the whole cost of the preparation of this environmental document, which is an E I R. Brief history, in October two thousand twenty-one, staff, uh, sorry, excuse me, the city council authorized staff to report with the with an E I R, we published an R M P, sent it to fourteen consulting firms and received back four proposals. Myself, our city engineer Matt Ostal, and Richard Prima, who is a kind of special projects person for the city and also a registered engineer. Who was, were on the team to review the proposals and select our top firm, which was Ascent. We did that without seeing the cost of the proposals. Once we had selected them, both myself and Richard Prima worked directly with the consulting firm to continue to sort out the scope and the budget and, and get everything understood. One thing that you, that is not in the agenda or in the staff report tonight, but was wasn't it last time, was that seven thousand dollars for the circulation plan. It is our anticipation that the circulation plan will need to be updated as part of this application. The reason we put it in there is to be transparent and forthcoming. Based on our uh, our B program, the applicant can ask to be reimbursed for, for that work. That is why between myself and Richard Prima, we put that in the staff report last time. We have taken it out because we understood that that caused um uh, additional layer of complexity and it's, it does not mean that it is gone. The applicant can still come back and ask to be reimbursed for that money, but we are not putting it as part of it tonight. But we do anticipate that the circulation plan may be updated, may be required to be updated as part of this process. So, um, and when that happens, we will follow the rules and regulations regarding public hearings, planning commission, city council, public meetings of getting public input for that. Tonight has nothing to do with the actual updating of the circulation plan. It is saying down the road, when we have this document in front of us and when we are making, with you and the planning commission are making decisions regarding this project, you may see an update to the circulation plan. So I hope that kind of clears that up. I, I would hate to get hung up on something that was meant to be transparent. that was meant to be transparency and not move this project forward because moving forward in the environmental review and determination is part of the process of processing this application. Like if the end product is to document the commission, both planning commission, the citizens and the council needs that document in the EIR to be able to make a full decision on the project. So that helps. Like I said, none of the other numbers have changed. A tactic is the professional service agreement with Ascent, which is $335,684. That includes a contingency. And I received a question about the deposit amount that is required from the applicant and it is up into the draft EIR phase. And that, that's what we have in the reimbursement agreement. It doesn't include a 10% contingency there. And that is because in our, both my experience, Richard Prima, Matt's experience and Ascent's professional experience, the costs up until that phase, that draft EIR are more stable. It's after when things take two, three, four, five, six, seven, 10, 50 meetings that the costs start going up. And so, you know, once this gets kicked off, it gets, it gets put to the consultant, consulting firm. They put their nose down, start doing the work and then bring it back to us. And that's when we, it's been in the city's hands again in time for review meetings, that kind of stuff. So that is why we felt there was no need to add that contingency to that first part of the project. It's deposited a quarter of a million dollars. So it's a large deposit to begin with. And yeah, I can answer any other questions about it. Another, sorry, I would throw one more question that was asked about covering costs, staff time. We are working on a different reimbursement agreement or reimbursement agree, the agreement with the applicant to cover staff time outside of this environmental review and the environmental consultant. So that is something we've been working under since November 2019. We have a set amount. We tell them we need to keep this amount of money in the deposit account every month. When it dips down, Michael will let us know if it ever gets too low. He says, stop work. I tell the applicant, too low, stopping work. Please replenish your deposit account. They send us a check and then we continue working. So we will are, we're proposing to continue working in that fashion with a reimbursement agreement specifically for the environmental document. Our reimbursement agreement for additional staff work outside of that. And yeah, so thank you. Can I answer any other questions you might have?
I think we'll wait and go back to the public. Did this, this staff explanation spark any questions from members of the public that are here in the room? And are there any comments, more additional comments on the Zoom? I keep watching his face. Yes, that's what I was going to do before.
Do you have a hand? Richard Prima.
Richard Prima, you are recognized.
Pardon me, I'm, I'm a kind of a new guy using Zoom. And I just wanted to comment very quickly to let you all know that I am a real person. I have been looking for the city since 2008 in a similar capacity on working on special projects, including development projects. I think Aaron recapped the process we have to dates very well. I, I want to just comment quickly that the review process that we're really, we've been working on this project for a couple of years now, working with the applicant. And it's, the, the application that you see now is a result of some changes that were suggested by staff. But by the time we go through the environmental process and the review with the planning commission and the review and hearings with the city council, there's any number of changes that could happen to the project. So please don't get too, too worried about what you see on paper today. The work is really just getting started. And I have offered this to, to the staff and I'm going to repeat it to all of you right now. One of the things we did with Zinthandale was we had a couple of workshops with the city council and I believe jointly with the planning commission to talk about the process for review and approval of a project. It was not project specific, but I think it really helped everybody understand where we were headed with the overall process. And I just wanted to get that out there because I, I sense some apprehension that you're, that we're getting ahead of ourselves and, and that is not the case. There's a lot more work to do and we need the EIR to really focus all of that work and get complete project in front of you with all the issues to be discussed and presented and hashed over and all that good stuff. So thank you for your, for your attention. And if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak?
I don't see any other answer.
Okay, we did have a member of the public write a document for that was, is to be read into the record. It is honorable city council members. Item 7.1 includes an item to revise the circulation plan for the city. Since this is considered a general plan amendment, there is a specific process required by the Calvert Government Code before a city can take action to substantially amend the general plan, which I believe would include giving direction to a consultant to amend a draft plan with a specific outcome in mind that has not been vetted with the required agencies and tribal governments. Furthermore, the city is required to include the public and hold public hearings before considering action on a recommendation for a proposed general plan amendment, Government Code Sections 65350 through 65362. I request that you remove the proposed revision to the general plan, the general plan, circulation plan from discussion and action until the city has met the intent of the state law relative to the preparation, adoption and amendment of the general plan. Sincerely, Stephanie Moreno. This time I'll open it up for the council to have any questions of staff or to make any comments about what they heard from the public. Peter?
Um, I don't have a whole lot to say other than it's getting a little frustrating for me to watch this process. You know, this is a simple process. It's, they get their, they get their shot at this. And at the end of the day, you know, we all still get to have transparency and get to talk about this. You know, particularly down the road, they can buy this. And it concerns me and I don't want our citizens or our city to be put in jeopardy or something that, you know, on good soil record to say, you know, presence of the problem. So, you know, I, I think, you know, most cities in the state of California, this would be just as simple as a consent counter item. That's how it works. You know, the transparency is later as it comes back, like Aaron said. And like Mr. Prima said, you know, that's when you do the process and you have, you know, this is just getting the ball started. It's just the application. So, and it's just, that's really all I can say. Thank you very much.
Councilmember White, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a call or a question for Frank. Are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Frank. After looking over this, all this all seems legit. We're all good, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Vice Mayor Ackerman. After, after council, are you opening it back up to the floor?
I will go back around.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Prima for his offer to be available for any questions and possibly help with a workshop. I think that would be nice. I continue a couple of weeks ago, what the issues that I had was the circulation plan revision. And Aaron, thank you for your explanation, but I'm that part still troubles me that this is, this is in here. I also want to say thank you to city staff for answering questions and emails that I had this week. And you also made some documents available online. So thank you for that. I don't think we're to the point of giving any direction or anything. So that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. I had a couple of observations. I thought, well, I went through all four proposals. And I, and it was not just exclusive to the Ascent proposal, but there was a heavy reliance on the applicant generated information in and that's referred to in each of the proposals time after time after time. Applicant generated this information, applicant generated this information. So I found that interesting that that the council's being asked to approve something that could be perceived as less than unbiased. Then my other con, I think that 7.1 is two separate actions. I did send Rex my comments about that, that I wanted the circulation plan to be a completely separate conversation. A development application can come in and they can propose roads on, on their development, wherever they think it fits in their development. But that shouldn't have anything to do with the city going through the process of developing its own standalone circulation plan, in my opinion. I know it's since 2011, so it would behoove us to start working on a circulation plan and they may coexist. But I think that needs to be taken out of this discussion for the development plan and have it be a separate discussion standalone with the planning commission, council of what the circulation plan would look like. So since and my other comment on the 2011 circulation plan, it may not be a reliable source because it's 2011. It may not currently be a reliable source of the complete picture, current complete picture. So I think that's important to have the conversation too. And the other comment, this is probably for Rex, is I saw a reference in here to the city was maintaining the two wells for use in emergency services. And we have not had a well report or that they have a capacity of, you know, so much or that we are even actually maintaining them. So I wanted to question that.
So we have the two wells that are on the other side of the roadway. They are tested and maintained by AWA on a monthly basis. So we do get a report to show that they're healthy wells. They are not part of any kind of consumable water. So if we have a water emergency, it's not like we hook up to it and all the people in the city get that water. The state required us not to have those connected along with our old water treatment plant to allow us to use the AWA wholesale water. So the wells are there, they work. When, some time ago, we talked about that Warm Waters Park, if you want to call it that. If they sold that property, exclude the wells from that sale, we'll always maintain them. So it's important to know that the wells are there because it does the offer and how it's filled. So we do monitor. I don't know if that answered your question, right?
It, it does and doesn't at the same time because it's referred to in a development agreement. So if it's not potable water or it can't be used for that, then it certainly can't be used as an argument that we have water. So the will serve letters would definitely have to come from AWA.
And you're correct. This water would not be water that could be without treatment used for any project in the community other than the thing that comes to mind was for me would be emergency fire suppression at law land and fire stuff where they could go out, hook up to it and start filling big tanks. Those kinds of uses, but for, to make it a consumable water, we'd have to go back through a treatment process. We don't have that anymore. So it'd kind of be more difficult.
Thank you. Is, is there any further discussion or comments from anyone here at City Hall?
Frank asked that Pat Ascent come up. I think there is an important thing I would like him to address. And I know you've mentioned that throughout the, the proposals. The confirms referred to consultant or, sorry, applicant provided work. So can I give a quick background on that? So the quick background is we had, we had told the applicants, they were worried about missing some crucial deadlines spring for some of the biology studies, that they could do those at their own risk, that we would not require a consultant to use them. But I would allow, when making available, when doing RFP, I, I told the consulting firms that these are available if they would like to use them also that they would review them. So Pat, if you'd like to maybe speak to how Ascent will use those, I think the council would like that. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, council. Pat Angel again from Ascent Environmental. In regards to your question, you're correct that our proposal, I'm sure just about all the other consultants' proposals make references through these technical studies that have been done by the applicant team. What is written in there, however, is that we would use that, we would look at that information, but we do our own technical peer review and confirm that we consider the technical reports accurate. If we don't consider them accurate, we do our own work. Or we may use a portion of the work that we feel is appropriate. So that's how that material would be used. But we can simply accept them as is. We carefully review them and make sure we agree with their conclusions. And there are a fair number of times in the work we do where an applicant provides a technical report and we find problems with it and we end up doing, redoing a portion of the analysis. One other item I just, since I'm up here, just to mention, I know the circulation element is a very important topic, a very critical topic to the city. I, I just want to clarify that the EIR is nothing more than a disclosure document providing you the information. The traffic consultant we have on board, the strong peers and associates, will provide you a whole detailed technical analysis of what happens should you amend the circulation element or keep it the way it is. They will provide that technical information that will be helpful in deciding whether or not to, to consider it should that aspect of the project move forward. And if you have any other questions, me, I'm happy to answer them.
I think what the concerns from the public and from some of the council is that once some, once there's this EIR process and things are identified as this will be the road or there's a draft map, then it puts the council in a very difficult position of a feeling that they might be obligated to utilize that as a collector road or and that it was not the process that is the state government code requires of this governing body.
Yes, and I understand council's concerns and the public's concerns in regards to this. And certainly, that concern can also be addressed through the alternatives analysis in the EIR where you could look at, well, what if we don't modify the circulation element and still do the project, what happens? And that information could be disclosed and the council could use that as part of their decision-making process.
You just reminded me of another comment I had that I didn't really write down is that in the proposals, I didn't read a lot, I didn't see a lot of emphasis on the alternatives and it is a requirement. So just thank you for mentioning.
Yes, yes, you are required under law to comply alternatives. Any other questions since I'm up here?
I, I have a question. It's a, a two-part, a little bit for Aaron and a little bit for you and thank you. In the agenda item, the, the language where we're, we're being asked to authorize the professional services agreement. And then it says, and circulation plan revision. Where it says, and circulation plan revision, if that was taken out, circulation plan revision, how would that change the scope of work you're going to do, the deliverables, the tasks? If we just took that language out of this agenda item?
Well, in regards to the EIR, we analyze whether the project is proposed. So if council were to direct it, that's just a non-starter. And the applicant gets changed, the application gets changed, we address whatever that is. So our job is just to evaluate the project as it's proposed. And I, I hope that answers your question.
Well, and, and, and maybe, maybe I need to rephrase the question. Because it's my impression of what you just said, that there's, there's going to be this extensive traffic analysis done. That, that won't change, right? You're, you're going to do that.
No, correct, yes, we, we, we have, uh, there's a.
That's part of the EIR.
There's a, there's a, I believe it's under task six, there's a description, these technical studies we're doing. And one of them is called a, a transportation analysis consistent with your general plan. In addition to your circulation element, you have operational. Standards set forth, and so the traffic analysis will get into that in regards to congestion. Um, queuing, if there's any safety issues because of, of the new traffic coming onto the system and the redways that are being added as part of the project. So that still happens.
Thank you.
Uh, you're, you're good, we're good. Uh, Erin, I did want to ask a question regarding the section that keeps referring to reimbursement agreement. And we, you did discuss a, a separate reimbursement agreement for staff time, but. Uh, it talks about hundred percent cost recovery, but it doesn't. Um, easily describe the deposit, which you did refer to in your staff. Report, and our municipal code requires one hundred percent deposit of those amounts.
So I, let me get to this section. If, what the municipal code says is that. We require deposit of, of a hundred percent deposit up through draft EIR. I don't, I'm not looking at it directly, and we may require additional deposits for staff time, consultant time. And so what this reimbursement agreement is for is just up into the one hundred, one hundred percent. Deposit up through draft EIR, and so that two forty-nine, two forty-eight. Is what, when you go through the budget. The number we hit, what we should be handed to draft EIR.
So if. If we did make a proposal this evening, a, a motion for action. We could have language in that motion that the deposit would be consistent with. The city's general plan, municipal plan. Code.
Code.
Yeah.
A- a- as proposed, it is consistent with the municipal.
Right.
Yeah.
But.
Would it be double clarification, do we?
I think that. I, because it's not in here, I think it would be very clear if we had language this, because. People twenty years from now are, are going to look at our minutes as our history. Those are the actions we took, so if we use language that always clarifies. That we were taking actions that were consistent with not only our. Requirements, but state's requirements, it could be of value and not hurt anything if we're already there. So that's my only comment on that.
I, I heard you saying that, I think that if she finds it in there, uh, that if you move forward, you take action, definitely say that. Whatever the reimbursement has to match with our municipal code is, then. That, I, that would point you in that right direction, Michael. We all think.
I, I think we all agree, and we can even check with Frank if we need to, but even if it's not in the specific motion, it's that likely to be in the minutes. Make it clear.
Are we ready for a motion?
Uh, Mary Ann. Yeah, I have a, a question and a comment about, uh, what you just mentioned. Um, in the municipal code, there is the part about may include. Staff in contact or contract staff cost.
Yes, I found it.
So. Uh, so if the, if the. Item. That, that, if the motion is made and it refers to the, that it needs to be in compliance with the mi- municipal code. How does that tell somebody twenty years from now? That we, that, that, that little part, choice of may. That we chose not to.
I like, is, is consistent or will be.
So, but that's, I think, can I, can I read from the municipal code and so that we're.
Of course.
So before preparation of the draft ER, EIR can be done, oh, this is, um. Section eighteen point zero five point zero seven zero, environmental impact report. E six. Uh, before preparation of the draft EIR can begin, the applicant must submit the entire portion of the fee deemed necessary for the preparation of the draft. EIR. The fee may include a deposit for estimated costs that will be incurred by city staff. And the city's contract planner, engineer, attorney, as well as. Any estimate provided by the consultant that is selected to prepare the draft EIR. Following the contract execution thirty day, thirty percent of the draft EIR preparation fee is paid to the consultant as an initial payment. So I, I believe that this is meeting the intent of the municipal code. Because we have our other agreement in place that we have been working on, uh, for two and a half years.
And, but I also agree with Michael that if we included this discussion in more depth in the minutes. Then that may ha- provide more clarification.
Of course.
So for information purposes, we have a fifteen thousand dollar deposit. And I believe the estimate of staff time to the draft EIR was fourteen. So even like without being replenished, it stated that recovery, however, that became hard to be replenished, so. Uh, perhaps in motion, perhaps council direction, what. I would suggest is that, uh, we recognize that the may, we chose to do that. Uh, we recognize that the fifteen thousand dollar deposit account is sufficient as in the additional, it's, it's described there. And, uh, as the additional deposit for staff time. I, I, I mean, I can't think guesses to how they were thinking when they wrote this. Uh, but they may have been thinking that there's one deposit account, we already have this. So as, as long as the applicant is current on that, is current before the beginning of this. And fifteen thousand dollars, which I know isn't discussed in all of this, but. I believe we could recognize that in the minutes as well.
If, 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 can I just also clarify, since I'm the only lawyer in the room besides Kevin Kemper? Um, but, uh, the, wha- whatever act, if the, if the, if the council. It's to, if we want to put in the minutes, we're compliant with municipal, that's certainly the council's discretion, but just to clarify, the language where it says may include. Staff time, and I'm paraphrasing, that language is permissive language, it's not mandatory language. So the council has the option of, of including that. So if it is included, we would be compliant with our municipal code. If it doesn't include that, we would also be compliant with our municipal code. We have that, we have that choice, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, and then the, the other thing that I just wanted to go back to briefly. Because it's a worthy discussion and it was discussed by the public, is. What are the ramifications if we remove all references in our motion? And resolution to the circulation plan?
Frank, would you like to weigh in on that, please?
Well, uh, we could absolutely remove the references to the circulation plan. Um, we count, the, the direction doesn't have to include the circulation, I don't. I, I don't, it doesn't have to include that, so it, so yeah, that, that's the, that's the choice of this council.
Well, I think that that's one of the, uh, the highest. Interest points of the public in the council right now is including language that takes, that might be perceived as taking council action. Without the public process prior to that.
Well, um. I, I, I understand some of the concerns, um. I think that, um. I think that the, the, the analysis that's being done is, there, there's. Correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, but the, the, the potential analysis as an, an environmental analysis, let's be clear, we're not talking about a draft amendment. But the environmental analysis as it would relate to the circulation plan is an element of the general plan. But the gen, the, the project itself has many general plan implications beyond just this, correct?
Yes, correct. They have applied for a general plan amendment because they need to change their land use designation. Um, their zoning, so that, this is just one of the many general plan amendments that potentially. Will come across the decision makers.
So I'm not, so I, I guess I just need to say. Um, I, I'm not convinced and I don't find it persuasive that we're skirting the government code as it relates to. Because we're do, we're, we're, if there were a direction related to circulation plan, then if that's the case, then pretty much let's throw out the whole, we can throw out the whole. Environmental analysis because the project itself is implicating many spokes with the general plan. So.
I think that's correct.
And so I just, I just want to be clear about that. Now, that being said. Um, I'm trying to skim through this while I'm doing this, so I apologize. Um. You know, I don't know, Erin, and maybe Richard can chime in. I mean, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to, I can say from a Brown Act perspective, from a, a direction, direct, you know, what. Council has the authority to do, the council has the authority. To take out direction as it relates to the circulation plan if it fills it must. I just said, I don't think. I don't think we're breaking any laws by moving forward with this, um, I, I feel strongly about that. But obviously ca- but as a prudential matter, council has the authority to still give direction. Uh, as it relates to the circu- circulation plan or not, I guess I, I guess I just need to know from Richard or Erin. Um. Uh, can the analysis for the project still happen, or what are the implications if, if, if that's taken out? From a project perspective?
It will be analyzed whether, whether we mentioned it here or two weeks ago or not, so I think. Um, again, it was us, an, an attempt to be transparent that. That, that was the purpose of it, but we will, we, we have to analyze all of it, and that's exactly what Pat said. So whether we say the word circulation plan here at the meeting or not, it will be looked at.
Well, I think that's my point because it's not the only general plan amendment that's happening, there are many, many things that are going to happen. And possibly many more than we know of now, based on the study.
Exactly, exactly.
So I think, I think, think removing that language is, while. It's not illegal to have the language in there, is not necessary.
Agreed, and I don't believe, I mean, I was just trying to look through this, it's not in anything that we're signing or doing. The agreements, the, the, the authority that you're giving to Rex does not have, there's no mention of the circulation plan in there, so. I, everything is, um, the agreements are what you want, from what I, what I hear, which you're looking for.
So, yeah, absolutely, so, um. If we. At this point, a joy, uh, you know. Don't worry about what it says on the agenda. Make it clear in the motion that, that motion is to provide the EIR. The study, that's it.
It, so what the motions are is to provide authorization for the city manager or if does he need to enter into a professional service agreement with Ascent. And to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the applicant.
My question's for Pat. This isn't going to affect your body of work at all, is it? You, you're, you're, you're still going to give us the same audio.
Correct.
Okay, that's, yeah.
This, this may have been said already, but, but this may, the only reason that that particular part was pulled out and. I believe Richard is probably the one that flagged it, is that it, it is. Informational use, so the council should know that if it does lead to the amendment. Uh, the city would probably be responsible to reimburse the applicant that seven thousand dollars. So the way it was written made it look like, oh, this is happening, it's not necessarily happening. If it's going to happen. Uh, the part of it that the city should have taken care of before, we would have to pay for it. So, so that's.
Well, and there might be a lot of other things that are identified as part of the study, but that doesn't mean we have to. Talk about each one individually here, so.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion, just to move this thing forward, because we should be the, all that one.
Mary Ann has a question. Go ahead.
Sorry, I haven't, I haven't made an option, I mean, that's out of my motion for.
She had her finger on the button.
Okay, so does I.
Uh, the, back to the reimbursement agreement. Could we also, um, have the condition or give staff direction? That the reimbursement agreement would be executed only if and when the applicant's account is, current account is current. Which, which may be the case.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's how we, we operate now, so, but we'll make sure that that is in the minutes.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy a question?
Yeah, council could add that condition to, to the, to the transaction, that's not a problem.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. Authorize professional service agreement with Ascent Environmental in an amount of not to exceed three hundred thirty-five thousand six, six hundred eighty-four dollars. For preparation of EIR for the Greenwich Ranch subdivision and Forty-Niner Village RV Resort Expansion Project. And circulation plan revision and two reimbursement agreement between city and project developers. For a one hundred percent of set related work for project. And then per what Valerie wanted, one hundred percent reimbursement as per municipal code. I second that.
I want to make sure that you're clear that you included the language circulation plan in your motion. Which might put your motion in jeopardy.
I'll take my chances. I'm, I don't, I don't, I, I think you guys are, are using that as a tool, I don't.
No.
That's right, it's, it's, we can agree to disagree.
I'd like to make a second motion, or, I'd like, no, no, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion. I guess it is a second motion.
Well, there's a, two choices you have here, council member, or vice, sorry, vice mayor, I had to get them right. Um, you either do a substitute motion, which would essentially swallow the first motion, or if there were parts of. Or majority of what you liked from the first motion, you can do a motion, uh, to amend, so, uh, it's your choice. If, if it's easier just to do a substitute motion, knock yourself out.
Okay, I'll do a substitute motion. To authorize professional service agreement. With Ascent Environmental in an amount not to exceed three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, six, six hundred eighty-four thousand. Three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars for the preparation of EIR for the Greenwich Ranch. Subdivision and Forty-Niner Village RV Resort Expansion Project. And two. Reimbursement agreement between city and project developers for one hundred percent of set EIR related work for project. To be executed after. The applicant's account is current. Uh, second that motion.
Okay.
Maria.
Maria.
The, make sure you take the second motion first on the roll call vote, Maria.
Roll call vote. Councilmember, why?
Okay, I'm going to go I just because I can see that this thing getting split. Um, because it's basically the same thing just with the wording. So I.
Councilmember, I'm ready to.
I. Could say, because we just need to get this over with, move on. It's all semantics.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
I.
May, may Frank, Frank Felder?
Hi.
We can pass it before this.
Yes, we can.
I gotta get Doug and he's froze up.
I hope there's some hit on the radio, huh?
Peter, ten minutes, does that go? Okay.
I have a lot of this social electorate, anybody wants one?
You might, you might need that, you still got a long drive ahead of you, Rex.
I will, I'll stop.
But. And I'm sorry, I think.
Just wait, capture me.
But, and that's why I asked.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, it was really nice.
You too, and I, thank you, I'm doing founders, but I just, this stuff is driving me crazy. So I want to get together with him, and I think in meetings is an excellent way to do it, if I can get Mike and Rex together with my dad, my brother, and I, I, we can get this meshed out, because there's stuff in this, in this application, Valerie, either needs to be, I I mean, anyway. I'm gonna get to the bottom. Okay, so that we can all live in, because I want to pay. I don't want to not pay, but I want it to be fair too, so.
They can freeze the old stuff, so your money doesn't go in.
That's not what they told me today. They said they could not.
That would be nothing that would make sense.
Well, that's what I said. Well, that's what I said, I go, well, what do you mean, you don't want to, so in other words, they're telling me they don't want to take my money. And I'm taking, really? Okay, okay, guys, all right, thanks, guys.
She's a grandbaby. She's all healthy, I, I, not herself, everybody's healthy.
Yeah. Fetus during the breeding, yeah. It's not this type of birth. Little hammy, it's just a hamster.
I I got this feeling the other day, anybody. He's a wagon, or he has some toy or something that must be all important. Oh, no, he was driving his little green thing, yeah. It's remote control. I it that, I only, I only figured that out after like a half hour, I'm like, wow, he's really good, and like, when I see Michael, I'm like, I I didn't even see, no, it totally, I told me, it totally fooled me.
Their next door neighbor, Trevor, they have, their little daughter has a Jeep.
Yeah.
It's a white Jeep that goes out.
I was working for this.
But it's, it's two of them.
AMC.
And I've seen other video, and he's going around the town, and one, he leaves right, and he kisses.
No. Wow, oh, that that goes in the high school graduation wedding thing, that's, that goes in everything in the future.
How cute.
That's amazing, that's amazing to even do, I have to do that, that's good. Well, good, I'm glad they're doing well. Amber, Amber really likes working with Michael. And that is.
It's a good place.
Oh, it's a hell of a professional environment. Tracy is amazing to talk to, she is so the best for her.
Well, hospitality, training, ambulance getting is priceless.
It is.
For any of this, because she's gonna be, it's critical, and it's probably something, only do it right now.
Right, right then, I bet, just every single person is a different person, and it's all new, no, no memory of previous people, any of those musters.
Are you frozen?
No, I was in my car, I had my heater on, that was great.
She'll run out of gas.
I have a, about a quart of tank.
Oh, my.
I I was very comfortable. It's freezing outside.
Oh, yeah. So we were giving them 10 minutes. Only taken four, so.
Peter, Peter was dying for a cigarette there.
Because he got the gallery. Well, he started getting short with everyone.
Yeah, he's having a nicotine fit.
Yeah, he started getting short with my wife, and when it jumped in to make a motion, and I thought, oh, I owe something.
Yeah. You know him well enough. I can't believe we're shorts in kind of weather, isn't that funny?
It's freezing in here. I almost brought a wrap, I just sweated.
It's surprising, all all these people in there, huh?
Most expensive drinks I've had in a long time.
Freezing in here.
Pretty cringey.
Deals with this number, but your next meeting is 105th birthday of Christmas.
Okay, yeah, I knew it was like February of 1917.
Yeah, so it's it's, well, it'll be technically the day after the 105th birthday.
We should still get.
Should be something neat to do.
I still, we could authorize, because we don't have to go to council for all these things, like this. Parts of rest money that's already been budgeted, we could have Cam make a banner, which wants to cross the road. So we could leave it up there for a long time, because it's good. Here.
Yeah.
So that, we wouldn't need it to be as big as the heartland, it turned out beautiful though.
I hate this sign, the sign, the Purple Heartland is beautiful, and that's neat, that's just beautiful, just being there.
Yeah. Wait till I try to change the road name.
Oh, wait, where it's one, oh, just like the highway here.
No, I thought about church streets, we'll turn it on, Purple Heart. Boulevard and put, put a heart, purple heart right at Main Street connection.
What about, well, and it leads right up to a veteran's entrance of the cemetery.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and there is no church, that's weird. I I think that was a very poor decision of the council's part.
Well, I think it was very good decision.
The, um, so with the cemetery there, still gonna fix, so I talked to the Boy Scouts too, about doing more up there, it's nice what they did.
It was so exciting to have six of them.
Yeah, it's nice.
And I ju- I only contacted Josh probably about five days ago.
Yeah.
To see if they could put it together. So at some, I I want to have non-story kids.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so, and and or, yeah, or even kindergarteners do the pledge of allegiance, things like that, so they just understand.
I would like to have someone each time, because it also is an interesting.
Well, yeah, there's there's something both happening, but they have no idea.
I hate about the Boy Scouts, I thought they were very, very nice.
So I'll look to see if there's something interesting in the newspaper from 105 years ago, next week. You know, maybe not as an invitation, but just an interesting reading of something. There happens to be an article, so I mean, it was cool when we did the 100 year thing.
And we'll do that under the title, you know, under invitation and proclamation.
Okay, so let me, let me see what I find, or there's something that Jack has, or something cool that's out there.
Give it in the archives at the library.
Oh, well, what's her name at the archives? Yeah, I'll ask her, she knows something.
Okay.
Okay.
One more minute, they've got one more minute. So it's 20 minutes, they toward.
At the end of the meeting, so like, oh.
I do believe that we should, we could, yeah. That's impossible. You know? Right. Yeah, I'm so sorry. I mean, I know it took a long time too, but the public needed to be able to express like stories about the way.
I was a very young mother, and I was certainly questioning.
And I was talking to some people, I liked what they got, and told me about that, the top, all of the progressives. Yeah. Uh, so we had a really successful. And I, but I'm glad, I'm glad I had to say that.
Still need your code on?
Got the sign, yeah, it's frozen. I think Maria did, but it takes so long.
Yeah, I think Maria turned it on. Thanks, Erin. Where's Michael?
He's out in the 4A pocket.
It's our Dana.
She's our Dana.
Oh, so he wants me to wait. Thank you, Erin. 10 minutes means 10 minutes.
That's right.
Come on, Dana, sit down.
I'm sorry, I was attending a pre-meet.
That's serious.
Uh, we have, so. You should have a W2, actually, oh, yeah, you should have a W2, you probably have another one. Uh, that's because Ajax appeared to not send them, so I printed out the copies and gave them to everybody, and then, you know, the next day.
That's what I'm saying, I'm like, I got two, so what do we do?
Item 7.2 on the agenda is Amador Vintners Association TOT application request for TOT funding in the amount of $10,000 for its four fires event in May of 2022. Uh, do we have any members of public that would like to speak on this issue?
Yes, hello. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, City Council and the city staff. I'm Margaret Schrader, I'm the new executive director for the Amador Vintners Association. I have a few other members here with me today, we have Emily Gaines, she's the board president. She's from Terra Oro, and she is my manager. We have Bailey Lavenko, our newest member, she's our marketing coordinator. And then, um, Jamie Lavenko's here too, and she is a member.
See, they're hiding from me because of this.
Can I, can I have you take that mic, but there's some of that.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mike.
It's my first time, didn't know that, thank you. So we're here today to request $10,000 from the Promotion TOT Fund to support our Amador Four Fire Student Wine Festival, which is held at the Amador Fairgrounds on May 7. This is one of the premier events in the area. It really showcases all that Amador and Plymouth have to offer, because it features award-winning wines, um, and local chefs from the area and restaurants. We also have 30 plus local artisans, and that can sell their crafts at the festival. We have local musicians and local organizations like the Boys Club and um the Wildlife Refuge and the Amador Arts Council, that will be part of the event as well. A portion of the proceeds um from the auction also goes to the Amador Fairgrounds Foundation. This event will bring over fif- over 1,500 attendees to the area. We know that many of them are also coming and staying at lodging in the area, and at dining at restaurants, buying gas, and supporting the local community here. From the survey that we did from the last event that we had, 55% of the visitors, they visit restaurants and all of the other businesses, and 90% said that they would come back to the event and to visit Amador wineries again. I think that's what's unique about this event, what we're doing is we're bringing back repeat visitors that are gonna come three or four times per year on average, back to Plymouth and to the wineries. We're very excited also about continuing our partnership with the city, though we're making this shirt, and I'm gonna say proudly. We, you know, want to continue our relationship, and part of this is also being able to promote Plymouth through any marketing that we're doing, including print ads, radio spots, our website, we can, all of those things we can use to promote Plymouth. We can also engrave the Plymouth logo on the glasses that are commemorative gifts that all 1,500 um guests will receive, we've got samples of it too, with the logo for Plymouth on it, so you guys can see what that looks like, and take one home if you'd like. Um, and, you know, ultimately, we're here to partner, you know, with the city, and you know that you guys are the gateway to the Shenandoah Valley. We have 33 wineries out in that area, and they come through Plymouth on their way, and so we want to do what we can to support the development for the city, um, and anything, you know, we can do to help the community. Is there any questions?
I think we'll open it up for the public to speak first, before we go through the council with questions. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this agenda item?
That Michael Spina, and uh, I have seven pages here, I'd like to enter it to record, I do not want to read it into record right now, you're welcome. It's possible to put, and then it goes to, so I'll pay back. And that's seven pages there, so, like you said, the minutes are the history of the, uh, what happens here at City Council. So I figured, uh, when one of the 10 people in the two governing bodies, the planning commissioner or the council writes uh paragraphs and paragraphs online, it's only fair for future people to be able to read it, so. In there are, on those seven pages, are uh, every, a whole bunch of comments, I think all the comments that one of your planning commissioners wrote about 7.2 on the agenda, so uh, the published uh words there are from your governing body, and now they're public records, so I just figured that's for the people in the future. And um, I just hope that you guys have a good relationship with the Vintners, and I also hope that the Vintners, uh, when they are planning promotions, uh, that one of the things they can do is I think, uh, put their business name on the side of their building in town. I don't think that's been there for a few years, and uh, it would be also nice if the city could put up the new sign that says gateway to wine country, so if both of you guys could work together and uh get the signage uh complete, so it looks better for when people are visiting. Just consider that when you're thinking about this agenda item, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here, members of the public, that would like to speak on this agenda item? I knew Bailey couldn't read, oh, it's Jamie's.
Yeah. Is this thing gonna come back to the public after council discussion?
Yes, we'll bring it back one more time.
So can I make my comments then?
Of course you can, I just thought that the public discussion may have an effect on how the council asks questions.
I've been pretty outspoken, and I think, uh, I just admitted all of that into the public record via pages and pages of Facebook screenshots, so I'm not sure that I need to make that more known now, but I I probably gonna have questions after your guys' discussion.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Okay, um, we do have a member of the public that wrote a letter that would, she would like it read into the public record. Maria, I'm submitting the following comments to the city council regarding 7.2 TOT grant application on tonight's city agenda, and request that my comments be read into the record. Honorable council members, it's truly unfortunate that the city manager's failure to follow your direction has now resulted in putting both the council and the Vintners Association in a no-win situation. The policy adopted by the city council did not give authority to the city manager to allow applications to bypass the TOT committee review process. to bypass the T O T committee review process. For confirmation, please review the agenda packet and minutes for 2013, for February 13th, 2020. Nevertheless, unilaterally added a phrase to the grant guidelines on the city's website indicating that grant applications over $5,000 go straight to the city council. Even if an application is over the $5,000 cap, it still should be referred to the T O T committee for review and recommendation. It's no fault of the ABA that they followed the direction of the city manager, yet to approve their request tonight will effectively condone his unilateral and unauthorized action. Your primary responsibility is to residents of Plymouth and that includes following through on the commitments you publicly make when you adopt a policy. I request that you continue this item to one of your meetings in February and that you direct the T O T committee to convene a meeting to review, score and provide the recommendation as called for in the policy prior to taking your vote. I also request that the city, that, that you direct the city manager to remove his unilateral change to the policy from the grant guidelines so that future applications are processed in accordance with the policy. Sincerely, Stephanie Moreno. So, at this time, I would open it up for council questions, comments.
Okay. Um, I don't know, I look at the big picture items, stuff, I think we all know that I'm Mr. Rock and Roll Concert Goer and I love concerts. Um, I remember I really followed what was going on with what they call the Aftershock Festival down in Sacramento. Because the big reason was is I heard a number of the year that they didn't have it due to COVID, that the city lost $10 million in T O T. $10 million is a pretty big number and money that they lost to T O T. Um, they had it last year and they reported that they made $20 million in T O T tax on that event. So, big events bring in big tax revenue. The one thing that I did see and I don't want to get too much into, I'll call it the shit show on Facebook, that's how I felt it was, was the fact of the public got involved and they didn't understand what T O T represented. Um, with that being said, yeah, you know what, I would love to have T O T to have, you know, pop up events all over the place, things for the community and stuff, but I also think that with the cycle of things, big events need to happen, well, we're no Sacramento. This is one of the bigger events that the Fairgrounds has, so that gets those hotels rented, that gets the 49er rented, that gets that T O T to rejuvenate itself. Then we're not even talking about the sales tax of the businesses that when people go and, you know, buy something out of the hot case at the gas station or actually fuel or things of that nature. So I look at it as just one cycle and I think that that wasn't being represented when I, when I looked at Facebook the other day. That, that whole thing was not being represented and that's all I have to say, really.
Thank you, Keith. Any other questions, comments?
Well, Jeff, our prior city manager, when I sat down years ago, because I had a similar question. What is the return on our money? And so Jeff, when I sat down and we went through and figured out that basically it's about a 30% return for every dollar spent. No matter what the number is, I mean, yeah, you get about a 30% return on our money. There's no bank out there that gives 30% interest. So I think the return on money is actually pretty decent for a investment and it does help support our community, you know, not just the city, but valley, everyone symbiotically. And so, you know, historically, if you look at this, this has never been a question. I mean, we funded this many times before throughout the years, this is not new, this is not something that just dropped on our plate. And it's like, oh my God, where'd this come from? This is, this is a historical amount of money, you know, that we've given to, to this, I mean, you know, the rodeo and what he says, I mean, it's, 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 money comes back around. And that's the whole purpose of how T O T has set up. And so, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't like, like, um, like he says, the shit show on Facebook, because we can't respond to that, because that's not what we do, our business, we do our business right here tonight. This is where we do it. And that's kind of asserts our process on some level. And it's not always going to present truths that are being used out there and, and not educated in our, you know, but everything we have put in place for this. So, when you, when you, when you're dealing with that, then you're slightly running counsel with fear because of how we might vote on something. So this makes it very difficult for me when, when I see that go on over and over and over again on many subjects, that, that makes it very difficult. I think it needs to be put on the record that it really stymies on how we govern up here. We need to hear from our people, yes, 1,000%, but not like that. I mean, we need people to show up at our meetings, we need people to be a part of the process and talk to us on the street and call us at our homes or on our cell phones, whatever that may be, to get this information. I mean, that, that's, that's how this comes to us. So this continued barrage of, of, of E S is not fair to our city, its citizens, or this process and the transparency. So, again, I've got a lot of frustration tonight because there's a lot of things going on and it's very frustrating and I'm going to.
Okay, Peter.
Are you going to cut me off because you let everyone else go because you don't like what I'm saying?
No, because what you're saying doesn't, has no longer anything to do with the agenda item. And that's why I, we all get the point, everyone's frustrated, but we're going to very clearly stick to the agenda.
I did stick to the agenda item, this has to do everything with the agenda item, Valerie, thank you very much. I barely skirted off the edge a little bit, so don't correct me or bring me back, like I'm going wildly huffed into the blue somewhere.
That's my job.
Yeah, well. Yes and no. Not when you select me. But thank you very much.
Go ahead, Doug.
Plymouth needs all the festivals and all the, uh, all the positive things it could possibly put their hands on. I think that the Four Fires has been a, a very positive event for quite some time. I am very, very, very happy that they're going to do it again this year. I think they took last year off. I think it's a good thing. And I also would like to, uh, local Margaret. I do, uh, in there, uh, lady, uh, president and.
Executive Director.
Excuse me. Executive Director, pardon me. Welcome. I wish you a lot of luck. We, we, uh, need all the help we can get from you and your, and your, your, uh, members. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, and thank you, Margaret, for coming and the, the rest of you from the, the Vintners Association. And, um, I don't have much to say about this, um, I'll just make my one comment about Facebook and, um, I am not in the particular group where I think every, the discussion was taking place. But I, 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 I welcome feedback from everybody, good, bad, ugly, in any manner. Call me, text me, email me, put it on Facebook, but I might not be in that group. Um, I don't care how you get the information to me. You can bet, you can spout off, I want to hear. But I'm just not in that particular Facebook group. Um, I, I, I value the relationship that, that the city has with the Vintners Association, so again, thank, thank you guys for coming.
Um, I want to preface everything with, we, we do have a good relationship with the ABA and the Grape Growers Association, all, all the groups, um, that have festivals. The wine grape growers put on great festivals every year. And so, the process that we have has nothing to do with not liking, um, the organization or the events. Four Fires has traditionally been one of the highlight events of the year around here and it never disappoints. Uh, I had a couple of comments about, I've mentioned this before, when groups come and the $10,000 is included in total sponsorship, but what I was looking for is what, how is that $10,000 to be utilized? So what is the city, like, okay, so it would be different if the city decided we will directly sponsor the Capital Public Radio and then Capital Public Radio says this ad sponsored by the city of Plymouth, those types of things. Um, so if we were direct sponsoring the glassware or the, the marketing campaign, something like that, it, I just was looking for more information instead of being a $10,000 in a line item of a budget, what is the $10,000 for? Button.
Yes. I know. Yes, so that's what we were saying in terms of the community partnership, that the $10,000 would go to cover the city of Plymouth logo printed on the souvenir glass, the logo included in the print ad, the logo featured in, um, our Four Fire Spent Program on our website and for Cap Radio spots. So it'd be specifically tied to those promotional marketing things.
Okay. Thank you, uh, that makes me a lot more comfortable. I, I still want to add that this is an incredibly difficult decision for me, because I do believe in policy and procedure and that we have to, I mean, if we establish a policy, we, we are the, the guiders of that policy and every decision that a governing body makes is precedent setting. Because then it's, um, well, you did it for them. Why can't you do that for me this time? So, um, this is going to be a very difficult position for me and I really appreciate you coming and talking about it and the event. So, thank you.
I am also not part of this, uh, Facebook discussions, I'm not quite sure exactly, but what, what's the concern on the policy?
Uh, the city of Plymouth established in, in mid 2020, it took a long, it took over six months to establish a T O T policy. This policy is part of how we do business and it says that we have a T O T committee and that they meet twice a year and they issue, first before they meet, they issue the information about, the application period is open between here and here. So you then, at that time, you put in an application, it also says that applications won't be over $5,000. But it does not restrict any organization from putting in two separate applications through the process. So if you said, well, we want to put in a concession, an application to cover the concessions or cover a specific thing, then you put in another recommend, another application for a different $5,000. Then it would be vetted by the committee and come to council after that recommendation by them was made and that's the policy that we've established. We haven't been following that policy and I've been putting in a position of voting no many, many times because of my conviction to policy. So this is a hard one for me. I, and I truly believe in this event. And, and having butts in beds is what generates T O T. But there's lots of those beds in Sutter Creek and Jackson that will be full as well. So, um, I, I, you have other, you have in excess of the $10,000, you have $25,000 in, in sponsorship. Where is the other $15,000 that you've included in your budget?
Um, we have a sponsorship with Harrah's, so they're going to be a sponsor, we have a sponsorship with SAC Magazine as well and Cap Radio and there's others, you know, that we are hoping anybody wants to be a sponsor. We're looking for sponsors, we don't have all of them confirmed yet.
Thank you, I just think we should all be in this together and the other cities should be a part of supporting. But just because something happens in Plymouth doesn't mean it's the only community that benefits.
Uh, Madam Mayor, since you brought it up, could I have the opportunity to, uh, bring up the policy decision a little bit as to how this came about? Since it was brought in both in public there and you're not actually accurate. I think it's important that the rest of the council hear what, uh, some of my thought process was. So as they go to make a decision, they can see whether I violated the policy or not, as I was stating.
I'm not saying that you violated.
No, I understand, and I think that, that, if you have given the opportunity, I'd like to explain.
Yes.
Okay. So our T O T policy, uh, was originally done in, uh, 2019 and it did spend a long time, it was before I got here, then it was brought in in May after a lot of time went into it. The committee got together one time and after reviewing some, a bunch of grants, uh, they, they didn't approve very many, it was kind of cumbersome, so they, the committee brought it back to the council after having a workshop. And then in 2020, uh, they redid it, actually on February 13th, 2020. Part of the problem with it is that it really was very clear that if someone comes in with a grant application of $5,000 or less, the committee would review it and that's what the mayor had just said. So if they had come in and asked for $5,000, it would have been given to the committee. The problem, let's assume they asked for $5,000, they would never have gotten approval from the city council or that committee because they brought it in during a particular quarter and their event is in May. The committee will not have met until after their event was over. That's only a timing thing, but that is one part of it. The second part is, is that the, the maximum amount that people can apply for, it says right in the policy that you're referring to, is $5,000. So when someone is applying for a grant and it succeeds $5,000 and they read it the policy on the face, they go, huh, who I do? I, uh, interpreted it a little bit differently. The municipal code allows me, it's very clear, to, if there is not a clear policy, direction and guidance, I can make policy. I can take, and I want to help you with this, because, uh, Ms. Moreno who brought that thing and said it unilaterally did this, I did not. So the municipal code, and it's 2.08.606, Establishment of Rules, Regulations and Procedures. Says the city manager is hereby empowered to establish all rules, regulations and procedures not inconsistent with federal law, state law or ordinances, resolutions and policies of the city that he or she deems necessary or convenient for the discharge of his or her duties and the functions of the operations of the city. The city manager shall inform the city council of these rules, regulations and things. In the policy, it's, does not anywhere say, what do we do when someone asks for $5,001? It does not say break it down into two, it, it, it might be an idea to say come back and ask for two $5,000, but that's not what they did. My obligation and covered by municipal code says that I now, I didn't make this up, can say, what should I do? Would have been nice had we, when we did the policy, said, okay, zero to 5,000, this can make 5,002, whatever the max may be, comes to the city council. Now, it's very clear and was not mentioned, that this policy has been brought to you as a council three times for $10,000 increments. I didn't make this up, I didn't do this intentionally. I'm following the policy and as soon as the policy can't be followed and there's no exception to the policy, then that's my job and I followed the municipal code to do that job. So, all apologies to everybody thinking that I violated this policy, I did not. I followed the policy. The council made the policy. You cannot interject your definition of that policy because you don't like me. And you've seen several times, unilaterally rests, the city manager has done this, unilaterally has done this. This policy is clear. I had to do it this way, or I would have had to tell the applicant, sorry, we can't take this application. There was no exit to it. So, from that standpoint moving forward, um, the staff is recommending that you make a decision on the dollar amount, we didn't say it's yes or no. Currently, the T O T is budgeted sixty thousand dollars for the year.
I'm sorry, how much?
Sixty thousand, sixty thousand is when the budget comes out. We have spent twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. That leaves you thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars to be used for promotional events within the city. And you have had zero applicants for anything other than Kennedy Mines and the rodeo. And the rodeo did it twice because they canceled once, so you returned the money and you did it again, so this isn't new. It's a dollar amount that really should only be decided by you folks.
Should be measured, sure.
What?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty-four in the budget year.
For this year.
Right. So between now and June, if you were awarded this, you still have twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars for potential other applicants. So, I'm sorry it took so long, but it's frustrating for me as a city manager to tell you, I, to be told, you folks being told that I'm violating a rule or a policy, when in fact it is wrong, and that that just has to be known, that we have rules, and, and these guys worked hard on getting this policy together, and if they would have, if they did, a lot of times. If they wanted it to, obviously go back to these people. In two renditions of this, they should have said, they did not. So it tells me that the purpose of it was that the council was getting nickels and dimes to death, as well as happening, people are coming and taking a lot of council time up for small things that this committee would have been able to compress it into one or two businesses versus dozens. When you've got somebody asking for ten thousand dollars, which is gonna benefit the community as much as this one is, I don't think that's my job to tell you yes or no. It's definitely should be a committee of people, it should be you who manages our, our money. So uh, thanks for the time, Mayor, and I, and I appreciate it a great deal, but it had to be said and cleared up that maybe we really did something right.
Madam Mayor, I know everyone's got their finger on the button. I have two questions. Um, my one is, is was this, or was this the Barbera Fest, or was it the Barbera Fest, I think, us through, when Jack Morgan came and we actually, didn't we turn him down?
No.
Uh, no, we're good.
No, the Venters Association withdrew their application.
They withdrew their application, okay, that was, that was the one thing. And then, I don't know if this might be something that Frank handled, because it seems like it might be a little pinpointy on this. We know that this event, and we know the rodeo, are gonna be our two big ones that they asked for. Is there any way that they can get notification, hey, do this, you know, beforehand, you know, after the event?
Well, my, my suggestions in the future, and I don't wanna get in the weeds and get off track, but a lot of these things, if it's going to be like Keith is suggesting, if it is going to be an annual ask, then we could deal with it at the budget process. It's already itemized in the budget as potentially there. If they ask for it, it's already budgeted, and if they don't, it goes back in the fund. I also wanted to really quickly explain, and Michael um, will correct me if I'm incorrect, but a lot of people don't understand how the dollar amount happens every year. We originally had a six percent T O T. Then, um, people wanted to raise it to ten. So the ballot measure went in and on the ballot said, we'll increase this to ten percent, but two percent of that goes to promotions, and two percent of that goes to roads. So that's how every year we're restricted, we're not restricted, we can always use more. It's just that currently, the other portion is utilized by the general fund. So, I just wanted everyone to know how and why the T O T amount is what it is. John?
What are you saying?
I was on, I was on the council through all of this, and uh, I have to agree with Rex, he's a hundred percent right, everything he says is right, I can see. The reason the committee was set up is that the council was getting every week, every meeting or every other meeting, we were getting requests for three hundred, five hundred, but and it was taking up a lot of council time. So we went through this process, spent a lot of time on it, to, to eliminate the small uh, uh, requests. It worked too good. It stopped all requests.
Yeah, it did.
Well, COVID else.
And, and at one point in time, the vendors were getting funds for four objects. The cellar door, um, the big crush, the Barbera Festival, and four fires. They were getting all four of them. We ran it completely out of, out of the country, they, they, they didn't cover it all for, for two years here now, basically. But the intent of the, uh, if, if you know our C O T tax was established initially, it was money that was collected from people staying or lodging to encourage more lodging. And what happened, these cities and, and government entities took that money and used it for other things as then now. Out of the ten percent, we got, we're only, uh, uh, over the, the end point, two percent of that ten percent to go toward, back towards church activities. The initial thought behind the C O T tax was it would all go for, for the torches. So we're using, we're a big game because we're putting six percent of it in our general plan. But uh, when I was, I said, I, in the last year, I said, you know, we're, we're getting this ten thousand dollars a year, if we aren't, aren't certain of purpose, maybe we'll stop collecting. The budget, the, the, the balance of, that's left in, in the Q O T tax fund right now is it's three, four hundred thousand in it. It's way up there, I know that, more money in the, but, but generally, what I'm trying to say is, this is a great event. Uh, it was over the five thousand that we set up to take care of the small amounts, and the, the large amounts should cover this council. And uh, so I, I think a, a worthy operation. Thank you for listening to this crazy old man.
Thank you, John.
We love the preview, man.
Yeah.
What? Thanks for that, again, thanks for a second opportunity to talk, this is kind of a nicer way to present things, both before and after, getting plenty of public talk. Uh, Mary Ann, you are in the group, by the way, uh, the, the planning commissioner published in both groups. So you are, you are in.
I'm in one group, but not, not the one.
It's not your responsibility to have to read it, your eyes save you from potential harm.
Okay, let's stick to the budget item.
I, I am sticking to seven point two, uh, because a member of the governing body did make so many incorrect statements and published them online. Uh, I think it is something to think about, uh, about potential harm to over forty businesses. And uh, you know, people stressing other fellow coworkers in the governing body, uh, having to defend themselves. Uh, you know, I, I just think there's something to really think about with this. Especially with a new person coming into the vendors, it's a hell of a way to uh, say hi, you know? So, just consider, you know, in this day, you got nine pages read into record by Planning Commissioner Stephanie Moreno. And a lot of it was very negative. So, just consider what that did to people. Uh, when somebody is being very resonant words, um, the verifiable representation is absent. So, consider what happened tonight.
Is there any more comments?
I'll be quick.
Jump in, winemaker.
All right. I'm Emily Haines of The Winemaker at Terra Oro and the president of the Venters Association. Uh, I'm not a resident of Florida, I'm the president of Heingrove, so please forgive me.
Heingrove, it's okay.
Uh, so just like many of you, I came across all this information today, and I came across it secondhand, being not a resident from here. I've been digesting it throughout the day, just like, like all of us have been. Um, and it's, it's unfortunate that we're standing here in this position today. Uh, this is not how I wanted to approach you guys. We did, however, go through the legwork of reading through the, um, the policy, uh, and we tried to do, uh, we tried to go forward in this process with as much integrity and respect for you guys as we could. Um, so we appreciate your time here. Um, just a little bit about the A P A, so the Venters Association has funded this about seventy percent by events, which you can imagine over the past few years, that's really put a really big hurt in, in our budget and our ability to function. Uh, going into having this be our first big event, Barbera Fest was canceled due to a calendar fire. So this is our first time to really come out and have a good showing, and we really would love to partner with you guys on this uh, to, to jump in and really make a big splash in where we go in the future. I respect your guys' decisions, whatever your decisions may be today. Uh, we all come forward in our jobs, no matter what they are, they would be with the integrity, we wanna be respected. Um, and so, I do respect whatever decision you guys make today, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
On your first try, man. Yeah, you guys get baptism by fire.
There she is. I was about to go like this, Jamie.
I will try to be brief because I was anything but in the uh, Facebook comments. Um, I would like to say that as a wine right owner in Plymouth proper, it was difficult for me to stand quietly by and allow members of the community to think that the Venters Association, A, didn't benefit businesses in Plymouth. Um, and that taking money from the T O T fund was somehow taking money away from money that was going to fill potholes on the streets of residents. I have uh, been a recipient of T O T funds um, in numerous occasions, at Harvest Festival most recently, which I think was a huge success for our community. And the, the process didn't seem to be challenging at all, and it didn't cause any um, ruckus. So I was surprised that this one did cause some ruckus, and I would just suggest that whatever the process may be, it's clear so that the community is not given the impression that anyone um, is taking advantage of the process um, to take advantage of funds in the community, and/or that other people don't have the opportunity to come and seek funds for other things. Whatever that process might be, I think it needs to be clear. I always encourage people when they get upset because they see someone got money for this, and I think we should do this, I would say, well, there's a process. Put together a plan, go apply, and do that. Um, it, it's not hard, and I would encourage the community members who are listening or who are here tonight, who say, well, why aren't we using T O T funds to do a dog show, or whatever the idea might be, if you're passionate about that, and it's going to bring business to town, and be something that the community is going to enjoy and benefit from, then bring that forward. I don't think that we should be in competition with each other to make this town better. So, those are my comments, and I appreciate um, the council, and I appreciate the community's concern, and I hope that we can move forward without these things being so divisive.
Thank you, Jamie. Maria?
Margaret.
Margaret, that's it, I knew there was an S.
There's an N, no, no.
It's been a long meeting. Um, uh, you mentioned having the city's logo directly on funding certain things. And would you have any objection to that being part of a motion?
No. Yep. We can even show that we just, oh, yeah, an example of what.
Bailey.
Uh, this is from a previous year. It's kinda hard to see on there, but you can see that it's any other Plymouth.
It's empty.
Right.
Can I, I wanna make a comment about that. Former Mayor Burns was, he was real excitable about that, he wanted that on the glass one year, I, that was his big deal.
It is, I'm married, it's not a problem.
They are not, they are very not, and so that I think it makes the public and the council.
You guys can hold on to that.
Okay. Bingo. I, I'm, I'll be home in a little while, Bailey.
Bailey's next door.
So, I think it makes decisions that this governing body makes um, easier to make when, when, then the, like this, the citizens of Plymouth can look at something and say, look what we've done. And, but then, um, we also have to have the accountability when you come and come do a, a post-project report and say, you know, this is what the money went for, we used all of it, thank you very much. You know, so it's, it's hard, like, it's it is harder to quantify the benefit to each community than you would think. But we know, we get T O T, and it's an important tool for all of us. Um, so if we could do, if, if the motion could include direct marketing of the city or direct recognition from the city, I think that would be a compromise.
Absolutely, and that was in the proposal listing out exactly what the city would get.
Yep. It was, it was.
So anyone else? Are there any more questions or comments? Then what is the council's direction?
I'll make a I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we fund Emmerard Venters Association um, their request of funding of ten thousand dollars for buyers in May of twenty twenty-two. I second it.
It's been moved to seconded, could you do a roll call vote, Maria?
Roll call vote. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Sim.
Aye.
Councilmember Amarucho.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfilter.
Aye, but he didn't include some of those things in the motion.
Well, they're already in there. The marketing, all that stuff's in there.
Yeah, so, thank you very much for coming.
Margaret, correct?
Margaret.
Margaret.
Yeah, we're just gonna call you now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what, you know what the tough part about all this is, and I'm hoping that we're, well, Zinfandel is becoming part of this whole, the Zinfandel Ridge community, it's becoming, because we're all starting to know each other. We all know each other with these Facebook comments very well. I mean, like, and some of us are family getting into these Facebook comments. We all do love each other, I just wanna make sure that that's correct, too.
I'm one of the number one that gave you an empty collapse.
Exactly.
It's just very passionate.
Yeah. So, item seven point three on the agenda is council discussion and direction regarding unoccupied structures within the city. Any, and any possible action.
Can I start off?
Yeah, of course you can.
Thank you. I wanna thank Rex and Madam Mayor for placing this item on the agenda. I introduce this because I think we could start a community conversation about the future of Main Street. Main Street today is a very different, I'm sorry, is very different from the, by the lively, active street that was planned during its historic past. There isn't enough on Main Street at this time that can provide the services and opportunities that our citizens deserve. I propose this agenda item in response to many idle and boarded up buildings on Main Street. The lack of use of these buildings deprives our citizens of opportunities to work, shop, dine, and play in town. To the city, the lack of viable retail and commercial buildings in town deprives the city of two of the sources of revenue that stay in the city, which are sales tax and T O T tax. There was a development study that took place around ten years ago. I believe the study should be updated and reviewed in order to apply elements of that study to our current environment. We need to encourage property owners on Main Street to bring their buildings into a position of making positive We need to encourage property owners on Main Street to bring their buildings into a position of making positive contributions to Plymouth. We need to begin a dialogue and create incentives for these property owners to work with us. Plymouth is considered the gateway to the Chando Valley and a growing wine industry that attracts many visitors. We have an opportunity to be a good partner to this region as well as allowing our city to prosper. I don't have all the answers, but I know this conversation must start. I am hoping that tonight's discussion leads to input from our citizens, council members, city staff, and city staff to provide us with ideas, suggestions, and recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this issue?
I'd have somebody speak.
I forgot the Zoom is...
I was just thinking when you were talking there, when I was, when I was younger, Main Street was really thriving because at that time it was a rubber industry, the chemistry. But there was three bars, there were two grocery stores, there was two barber shops, and two grocery stores. And those have gone the way that they have in this very city. The barber shops are now corporate. So we don't have the, the generation, people get hair consent to support a corporate operation here in the barber shop. The grocery stores all go outside areas where there's, the big issue is parking. And that's why you get to Pokerville in the safe ways of those. And the grocery stores, of course, went the same way. There's no grocery store in the city at all now. And because they've all gone to the larger stores in the area. So it's a historic thing that we're dealing with as much as anything. And so we need to look at, you know, new ventures or what's, what's going on in Main Street. And possibly, there's several cities, Murphy's and some of those, they're doing real big things on their Main Street. So I'm looking forward to you seeing what you can do.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Mike. Is there, is there anyone else that is here that would like to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this agenda item? Thank you. Okay, council discussion. It was kind of... What I'm going to do here is say, the agenda item itself was a little bit vague, so it would be difficult to come up with a specific action to instruct staff on. So I think we're probably just going to get the ball rolling and have a discussion this evening, if that's all right with everyone.
Um, when I saw this on the agenda, and I think it's kind of funny that John got up here and gave his history lesson, and now my history lesson from when I was a child growing up in this community. Pokerville was on Main Street. Rory's was on Main Street. And of course, there's still businesses in this community, in this community at Beth is now where Pokerville was. And I think about it, and I look at, okay, we'll take Jackson as a perfect example. Jackson had its fair share of businesses that they lost and they gained quite a bit of businesses. The main landlord in Jackson, without giving his name, he has worked with multiple businesses to achieve, try to keep Jackson flourishing, kind of going. We don't have that one element here. But the one thing that, and I'll even go back to the previous item on the agenda and this item when I was thinking of both of them, and I don't know how to request it for a future agenda item or request it, but somehow this community needs to get involved in this topic. We need the community to understand what taxes and how they're used in the community, their ideas of what they want here in the community. Because that's, I think, a big thing that we don't know. We think of it as wine country, no disrespect to the vintners out there, but I'm a non-drinker. You know, so that's, that's a service that I'm not going to provide here in the community. I try to go down to Jamie's and eat food there. I mean, I will do that in summer, but you know.
Your wife drinks some.
My wife does drink enough. I will give her credit. So I really do think it's an, or I don't know if we can even make it an event, like, come to City Hall or come to the park, let's eat some pizza and let's talk this stuff out. I don't know if that's possible, but that might be a good route to start the ball rolling on something.
One of the, one of the things that you do is, and you know, I hate to use the word visioning sessions, but you come up with a specific topic, like the downtown revitalization plan, and you set up a date and have a meeting, and we can bring cupcakes and cookies.
Oh, my God.
And you, everyone gets to even sometimes break out groups on different subjects. Then they have a very vital discussion on each one of those things, come up with what their recommendations or what they'd like to see. So visioning is one of those things that we could put as a possible direction. The downtown revitalization plan that I think Councilmember Sim was referring to was done in nineteen ninety-seven, when I was the mayor. And it was, it's still a good plan. It has dust on it at this point. But if you think about it, not much has changed since nineteen ninety-seven. So there are parts of that plan that are very relevant, and that's a second thing that we could look at. So, yes, of course.
As everybody knows, I can sit outside for the last hour, for an hour. And I checked my car, my car's pointing down Main Street that direction. All the lights are on right now. Main Street looks beautiful right now. If you drive through here at two in the afternoon, it looks like a dog's breakfast. It just doesn't, I mean.
Did you get that, Maria?
It wouldn't take that much to try and get people to at least put some paint on their buildings, get the place looking better. Losing everybody down here, it looks like, but the difference between the, how it was day, how it was daytime.
That's different.
That's a different stat.
I should not have used that term, sorry.
That's like using the word mandatory.
Exactly. That doesn't fly well.
And it says, you know, there's two people down this end that are rather new to the community. You, the people on the other end of this table have been here a long time. You know a lot of people here. You're going to have a lot more influence with the logos than I am, for example. So hopefully you can convince.
So I, I, I want to build kind of on what Valerie said. And we've already done a more modern version of what she done just a couple of years ago. We've done two or three of them.
The visioning stuff.
Yeah, we did this, where they came in and they put the boards up and everyone from the community came in. We broke out, you know, they wrote down things, you know, and then we did it like two or three times where then they come back in a year or two and you kind of see how you move it forward. And more times than not, there was, or maybe not a hundred percent of the whole scope was attained, but any forward movement is what we want, right? I mean, that's, that's pushing us forward. So we do have some that are already in place, and, you know, and that company's still around, and that could already. And I don't think anyone, I don't think anyone is against Councilmember Sims on his ideas. I mean, I would love to see a ton of businesses, but I will agree with Mr. Colburn. You know, I can remember barber shops, you know, one of our former mayors was a barber here in town, you know? Yeah, and, you know, and that style of business has gone. I mean, with owning a salon, that style of business is, it wouldn't be viable here on Main Street. I just, I, I don't even know the idea. I know I go to these small towns and I see ice cream shops and coffee shops and, and that kind of thing. And when Carol had her boutique open, I thought it was so amazing.
You didn't buy the women's clothes?
No, I went in there and drank coffee. Yeah. But yeah, I do live in a household poor one, and I will just say that, too. But, but I do think there's got to be some real out-the-box thinking. And I don't, and I'm not saying that none of us have it here, but I just, what is that key to unlock that, that door? That's what we need to find out. And I will give a big thank you to our city manager for the pop-up thing. I thought that was going to be a phenomenal idea, and it was just an idea that, here, we'll try this, you know, kind of deal. I think anything will grow upon itself if you just find the right way to get it to grow.
Jamie? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jamie. I think part of the conversation that we need to talk about, and it's, it's the unpleasant part of the conversation. It's, it's, it's the unpopular topic, but it, but before I go there, there are a lot of great ideas. There's a lot of potential, a lot of possibilities. There are a lot of people that are already doing great things. I mean, I'm looking at one of them. Your business is, is great. It's a jewel to the city. We need more of that. But we also need to figure out what to do. There are a few buildings around Main Street. The owners, I don't think, live in town, and I, and I, I think it's problematic. So we can come up with all of the ideas, and we should. I don't want to say that we shouldn't, but we have to address that part, too. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I think that we've got to figure something out along those lines, too.
Jamie?
Hi, Jamie Labenco, Prospect Cellars, Visioning Committee member, TOT Committee member. Maybe I'm the common denominator. I don't know. I think the visioning has happened multiple times, like Peter mentioned, and I think there was positive stuff that came out of it, but we just never managed to move it forward. And I mean, just from being on Main Street for seven years, it's shocking to me that my tasting room has been open for seven years. And it's shocking to me that other businesses didn't open up around us. I mean, the brewery and I opened within a month of each other, and it really felt like that was the, the moment that we were going to kind of, the catalyst of the change was going to happen. The Taste and the Vintage Market have been open for like fifteen, twenty years and waiting for this to happen. And I think really what this needs to do besides sit around and get input, because there's plenty of input, I think there needs to be some real work done on what the economics of these businesses or what the economics of the community is that will make for viable businesses. Because when you put everybody together, and this happens often on Facebook, we need a Chinese food restaurant. We need, you know, and the things go kind of all in all different directions, but what businesses will really work here? And what kind of research can we do of like-minded communities where the businesses are working? We always think that we need businesses that appeal to both visitors and the locals, ice cream shops maybe, because the visitors will go to those, too. I don't have the ideas, but I think that there's research out there. We don't have to recreate the wheel here and then find these types of possible entrepreneurs, invest in the buildings with some CBGD funds that you currently have, bring in some of these businesses and make these things happen. I mean, we've been discussing making these things happen for a really long time. I don't know how we get past discussing them, I guess, is my question.
Thank you, Jamie. One of the things that I've been involved with economic development for basically twenty-five years now and leveraging of funds is one of the best investments that we can ever make, utilizing some of our existing CDVG funds as our local match for applying for downtown revitalization action, the facades. There's, there is, there are public funds available for this. And I know we have a very small staff here, but the, the funding is available from federal. It's usually HUD money and coming down through CDVG. But, and there's USDA rural development that there might be an ish in there with some of their funding. So that could be one component of the things we flushed out here tonight is just say, how do we fund? What, how, find out what we want to do, and then how do we get it funded? And then the other part is I wanted to recognize that Jamie is absolutely correct, that everyone can say, we need an antique shop, or we need this, or we need that, but they don't put their money up to do it. And it's a free market, and I believe strongly in a free market, and people are going to invest what they want to invest in, and they have to stay in business in that investment for us to be a vital community. So I just wanted to say, ideas are really wonderful, but we've got to help people stay in business.
Mayor, if I could, it kind of goes into my council report, but one of the things, I wanted to recap because I think this is going to be directed back to us to help motivate this group. Community events, visioning, community visioning, re, like this, re-revitalization plan, find that, get it out. Surveys about the current residents, what they want, not what we think they need, and see if that applies. We also, last night, were notified, and we were waiting for the official paper to tell you, but we do have two hundred thousand dollars, a block grant that we applied for. Took a while to get approved, and a hundred thousand dollars of that is geared towards microeconomics. And we're very fortunate to have Valerie. She explained, microeconomics means taking the small businesses, that, that already existing. The pop-up is a micro, small business. We thought we'd have gotten this earlier. That is figuring out how to take the brick building down here and make it into an oxbow like they have in that one. You know, so does that mean one just to attend it? So I made these notes. The other problem that we have seen, and you guys can confirm this or not, but it's about ten percent of the population does all the work. It's the same ten percent constantly. If you see an event take place downtown, you see a Colburn involved in it. If you see something happen over, and we can't forget that forty-nine should be considered part of our downtown in a way. I mean, we want to make improvements down here, but we got to get people to go left. I'll tell you a little bit about that in my council report. Yeah.
Good, go ahead.
I, just kind of my thing is piggyback on what Jamie said and kind of, I think it's all of us up here, Jamie, that we all know the thing that there's two types of people on this world. There's leaders and followers. Some of us lead completely different than others, and some of us follow completely different than others. What I've seen that's been a hard part with some of the businesses that have come throughout, there was followers opening up those businesses. I hate to put it that way. And I don't, and what Valerie said, it was a free market. It is a free market. But I don't know how to get that mindset going of, come on, we all know Jamie works hard. I mean, yeah, she, and she's members of every club under the sun through the community. How So Guard works hard. Tracy, come on, we all know. They're running two restaurants, a hotel, everything. That's that leadership mentality. You have to want to work. I don't know, I've seen it so many times in my industry where we get a fly-by-night company that comes in, oh, we're going to take you guys out. Okay, best of luck to you. And I'm the boss, I'm going to stay at home, I'm going to hire people. That's not how it works. I mean, the hardest guy who used Campbell Construction that I see working is Jeff out there working his butt off. You know, so I mean, that's, that's that leadership mentality, and I don't know how to bring that into the fold with this.
And I was going to make one more thing that might, and is like Keith said, completely outside of the box, but I have pondered and thought about and had discussions about, we have the historic downtown zone overlay, but we also could consider and discuss having a sales tax zone where if you are not generating, this is, this zone is designed to generate sales tax. If you're not generating sales tax, you're going to pay an in-lug fee. That fee is going to be paid, used to fix everything up.
Doug is going to jump up here and amend this. Right on. That's what he's been trying to say.
Out of the box.
Well, and I think something that's missing in this conversation also is heads of beds.
Yeah.
Heads of beds. Because unfortunately, a thousand people or twelve hundred people are going to support these businesses during the week. And businesses can't run on three days a week all, you know, for staffing purposes and everything. I mean, rent, I mean, so you've got, you, we, there has to be some growth on some level, whatever that might be. I'm not, I, I don't know what that number is, I can't say. You have twenty-five hundred people, three thousand people, I don't know what that number is. But you have to also look at that to, to, to generate that symbiotic relationship that, that during the week the locals can, can shop and, 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 and frequent these businesses to keep them in business. You, 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 so I mean, if you're at home with this, it takes that.
It's a free day, I don't think there's nothing here.
Right, there's nothing here, there's not enough people here.
Yeah, we'd be a seven, they, they six, seven days, we'd be a four or five. That's something to do here, I mean, so.
The, the larger down the road portion of that, and I think it's exactly what Peter is trying to describe, is describing, is you have mixed use downtowns where people live
Yeah.
and buy things and go to the restaurant and go to the pub, all in the same small community area.
And have connectivity, so the other parts of town can reach the, that, that main street. Just gonna throw that in there.
John?
Yeah, I, 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 one of the things I wanted to mention is that we had a street planning session about three years ago, and there was around thirty, thirty-five people showed up again.
Yeah.
And, and, and we're calling the show, and maybe it's time to do that again. But I was, one other thing out here, maybe a blue zone. Uh, I don't, you know, probably Mary Ann and I were just in the blue zone and Derek and I didn't know any of my other stuffs.
We've had.
But they will, if they come to town, they will search out grants for you. And they will, they will put anything, and I think that maybe I held for another Main Street with uh, maybe some uh, exercise shops or, you know, fitness shops or bicycle shop or, uh, you know, organic vegetable place or something.
No bicycles for you, John.
Maybe.
Just saying.
Maybe, uh, you know, maybe it's that, I was just trying to throw that out there because blue zones are, are very, very interesting once you get started. And, uh, and, and, and they're good for your community, it's, it's a good way to live. And uh, and just briefly, and, and, uh, the street, um, South, uh, in, in, in Los Angeles, the beach, three beach cities became a blue zone. And within three years, they reduced the obesity rate by twenty-five percent. That's probably several cases of cancer they've eliminated and, and that's, so it's a good way, and it might be something that we can include. Thank you, and uh, I'm gonna not say another word till you guys.
I wasn't rushing him. Um.
Gotcha.
You guys, I feel like when you finish one of these visionings, you need to do like, hire someone to do a drawing or a little like, what's it, diorama or something. People in the community need to be able to visualize this.
A rendering.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would go a long way in getting people excited about what their town could be if they could see it. Including the walking trails in the blue zone that connect all the other areas. There's so much in common in this conversation, but I do think people need to be able to see it. I was crowding my dad, but I get to crowd.
Company called MIT that does it.
Thank you.
There's only one last thing that I wanna add that I was thinking of because we see that visioning and that, where we could go. Um, of course, no one likes change and the fear of change. And we know that the fear of change in Plymouth is a pretty strong fear that we have here, so um, you know, I said, so maybe that needs to be part of this discussion, that change might not be a bad thing.
So I think we, I think it's been a great discussion.
Yeah.
And that's what the intent of tonight was, is just to open up the dialogue.
Can we get back to that agenda in the future? Maybe we'll, we'll bring some new ideas next time. This is kind of the first time, hopefully next time we'll, we can be a little more positive, but.
And so I would think we've given staff enough things to look at that he's like going, ah! But now that there was one comment that I need to read into the record, and then if there's no other comments, we're moving on. So um, I don't know, this is under Agenda Item seven point three vacant buildings. Honorable City Council members, there was very little information provided for item seven point three. I've requested in the future you direct the city manager to at least provide enough information on the agenda and in the staff report to give a member of the public the sense of what will be discussed and what direction is being sought from the city council as required by the roundabout. If your discussion will be about how to proceed to mitigate vacant buildings in downtown Plymouth, okay, you guys back there? Previous topic raised by council members, I would like to suggest that the council first consider an approach that provides technical air and or financial assistance to the property owners. Rather than simply initiating enforcement action, as many property and business owners are cash strapped now as a result of the pandemic. For example, you could recreate a downtown business building association program from CDBG and or CDBG reuse funding. The funding could be used to help restore and improve buildings through grant and or loan programs based on income. Loans could be secured by agreements and or means on the property. Add in TOT funding to provide desired public infrastructure improvements and could potentially see a fairly immediate improvement towards meeting your goal to restore the downtown area. Sincerely, Stephanie Morel. So I think we've exhausted this agenda item for that was for discussion and we're moving on. Soon as I find my agenda buried under all these pictures. So Agenda Item number eight, Council and Staff Communications, City Manager Support.
Um, I have a list.
And, and it's short, right?
Yes ma'am, we'll be on there by all that. The, uh, first of all, Prop sixty-eight, the park grant was awarded for two specific addresses in Plymouth. So for us, it's across the street and for Lachio. So you know that was awarded and we will be scheduling a, a public workshop for each of those. So people will have public input and we have until twenty twenty-three to accomplish whatever it is that is the desires of the community and the council. We, up here, we have a pump station at the Roundabout. And this pump station was built in before most everybody here, no, okay, not everybody, many years ago, sixty-seven years ago, that pump station was put in and we've had to replace the motor and we are now being told we need to start investigating replacing the entire pump station. Uh, we don't know how much that would cost, but you need to be prepared that will be one of those bigger expenses that's coming down the road.
Is it in the Roundabout?
That's, no, it sits off the, as you're giving.
Is it below the Roundabout?
It's two stories below Ground. It's huge, I think, wherever you go there. It takes sewage from just a small section of millions of, in the area of the Roundabout. And it goes there because it's gravity flow sewer system, yet pumps it uphill to get it into our system on Main Street and then sends it down the road. The pumps themselves work twenty-four seven and we've replaced them this time. And uh, we will, but now the infrastructure is crumbling, so, and the fines are huge.
Who am I talking to in terms of the replacement?
Hundred thousands, hundred fifty thousand dollars. Second is uh, the Plymouth housing element. This council's brought it up once, the Plymouth housing element update is underway. Uh, we are doing a countywide housing element update. Prior to this year, Plymouth was the only one that served in compliance. Um, but the grant was written countywide and every city will be get, beginning it. So it's important to know that on March tenth, attended time from three to four thirty PM and from seven to eight thirty PM will be the public hearings virtual. Now, once they confirm that, we'll get notices to public through our webpage, Facebook and through the council. Next, we have uh, their start the water lines that you approved. Will be starting this next week up on Fiddletown Road from the tank down. You'll start seeing some work out there, shouldn't interfere with traffic and things, but it still has some potential for it. The next thing is that we are uh, working with the CFD, which is the Community Finance District for Xiffa Del Ridge. And uh, you'll see that come back to the council after, the mayor and I talked about the best way to present that. Probably for the first time in many, many years, we're gonna ask the council to change hats.
Right.
And kind of work with Michael and I after we talked with the vendor for the landscaping to see if this, the direction the CFD board, which our chamber, uh, the council wants to go. Uh, that'll be taking place, but in the meantime, we're spraying for weed zots at the Del Ridge. So if in fact you know of anyone out there, they'll be notified by Code Red. And on our webpage, the date they're gonna go out and spray. If they don't want their yard sprayed, you gotta notify us since those are responsible for the weed abatement. And uh, but there's one guy I know that has grazes in front there, we wanna make sure that he knows we're gonna spray and things like that. Some better news, we got this at five thirty tonight, so we couldn't get it any other way. Uh, thanks to Michael, Doug, uh, other staff, we were awarded a million dollars today. Wow, this million dollars is, the best part about it is we don't have to do the work. This is the best grant you can ever have, Caltrans will. So it kinda goes hand in hand with what you guys were talking a little bit ago about, you know, making the community aware. Uh, the approval through the California Clean California Gateway Trails Beautification Project. Uh, we met with the Caltrans representative and he did all the work for District Ten. Now, now, this is a very high level scheduled constructions kind of thing, but before June of twenty-three. What they will do is they will make landscape improvements in our Roundabout. Cause this is their property, but they like to let us know, right? Uh, Roundabout improvements, transportation art, so some art, some focal points, some things that we suggest kinda deal. Gateway signage and monuments, we don't have any signage until people come shop any part of town. We asked for them, they said good for my roadway, takes care of that. And I think this right here probably will uh, help most people, an asphalt trail system from at least uh, along Highway forty-nine up to Main Street. Not Hawksview, we said no way, but, so, but.
Where are you again?
On forty-nine, so this is very high level, so we don't know.
We don't have exactly.
You know, we, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be flushed out, yeah.
Yeah, they'll, they'll come back later and they will hold their visioning.
Do you think, I think it's enough for all of them?
It's, it sounds like it might be, so just, just a little bit of extra clarification.
I mean, it's wonderful, you could, good job.
So technically, it wasn't awarded to us, it was awarded to Caltrans. That's why it hasn't come before you, I think we mentioned it, that hey, this might be a possibility. Cause they said, do you want us to do a project? And we're like, we wouldn't complain.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, right, everything Rex has said is exactly accurate. But the, what they're currently looking at is going from the Roundabout to Zen and Down with the one exception of where it would require a bridge right at forty-nine. So what they're saying is, is the way that this specific was a competitive grant among Caltrans.
Right.
Essentially, the way that uh, this, this was awarded, it's supposed to be get things done quick. It was one of the governor's kind of pet projects, he's very excited about this, wants to turn it around quickly. So it's supposed to be done before twenty twenty-three. There's one piece that we don't know for sure, but I mean, I guess they're gonna say, we'll help you finish it, but it won't get done in time. And we may want to talk about that as a city, if we wanna work, uh, like ACTC did that.
Third one?
Twenty twenty-three.
Uh, I think June twenty twenty-three is supposed to be everything done.
It's over here now.
It, it is, and, and so it's, they're able to accelerate it all because there's, there's some processes that they don't necessarily have to follow, so Sequo, uh, so some things, but they're also gonna, like, like Rex said, the best part is we don't have to do most of this. There's one part, I think they're gonna flesh out for us, uh, they're gonna have some community engagement. We haven't even started to talk about exactly when, I think this spring is the plan, uh, where, uh, I guess it's the one, borrow City Hall and say, hey, community, come talk about this. There's one bridge would be required at forty-nine. So what they're currently expecting is they're, after their very preliminary environmental review, said they'll start either side, go up to that bridge. And if we want that bridge built, we could probably start that as a city project, run at the same time. They probably wanna get done by then, but it's something that's coming, it's there soon.
Michael, how long do you think it's gonna take for the planning to take place? And the bidding process and all this, before you put a shovel in ground?
It's, it's gonna be fast because it's, it's, council, they have the deadline. That's, we don't have to do the bidding.
We don't?
No, no, they.
They're gonna do it.
It's, they, they.
It's their project.
Yes.
Yeah, you just tell them where, where we want it and they'll, and they'll start?
They, um, we can provide more details, like Rex said, we got it back at five thirty.
Just came in.
But yeah, uh, so it, it starts at the Roundabout, it's down. It's in the middle, there's, there's not, it's wherever there's room on that Caltrans right away for an asphalt trail. I think it does start, their, their initial plan to start on one side of the street, have to go crosswalk together. But that's, uh, it's a good thing.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Were you?
I'm done, you said, you're done.
Okay. So Councilmember Sim, you have anything under Councilman, Mayor Councilmember Reports and fu- future requests for the Agenda Item?
I'm just so, so excited about this, right? I, this is, this is a, a big, this is a big deal. Thank you guys for all you, all you've done, I think you'll work out quite a while. But uh, that's terrific, thank you.
Councilmember Amber Rizzo.
Um, I, my usual suspects. Um, no, that aside, um, I think we need to future agendaize maybe a cleanup of our TOT tax uh, process and maybe that has committee, that doesn't have committee. Cause as John stated tonight, yes, COVID was part of it, but really, when all this kinda went down, it stopped everyone from coming to our door, which is unfortunate because again, we're not wanting to push people away, but we just, again, needed to curtail that meeting after meeting after meeting.
But don't you think there was an individual who was helping in that process, not a council member and outside individual who no longer represents?
Well, there was that in the organization, yeah. Um, yeah, he was, you know, put it on the street, go to one, go to the other, you know, along. So yeah, that was that, so there was, there was that for sure. But with, even with that person, no, I mean, yeah, it, it, that might change now. Yeah, so I, I just think we need to have a, a, maybe a, a conversation here about that, maybe tweak it to make it more usable, user friendly and attainable.
I agree, and especially on the timeframes probably.
Yeah.
Need to be um, o- an open timeframe and possibly right on the front page of the website of our website. So it's all open for discussion.
Sure, yeah, I mean.
Councilmember White?
I'm good.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
I just wanted to share an announcement. Should probably have told you first, you'll appreciate this, everybody will. Our um, Planning Commissioner Mike Sullivan, friend and neighbor, all around, great guy, uh, was just promoted to a leadership position of Chief Investigator for the Sacramento District Attorney's Office. So, go Mike.
That guy doesn't have any time.
Better have time, he's on the planning commission. Is that it, Mary Ann? Okay, I don't have anything right this minute because there's just been so much going around tonight.
Sorry to have to.
But um, I'll come back to you. But if I come up with something that I think should be on the agenda, I'll let Rex know and we'll discuss it. I wanna thank Frank for being on the Zoom, stay well, my friend.
Um. Thank you.
Um, so, you know, I think unless anyone else, oh, Mariann had one more thing she wanted to say.
Well, I think Frank ought to hold up the baby so we can all see the baby.
You know what, I would, but she's asleep and you do not.
Wake her up.
Yeah, you, yeah, don't wake her, don't wake a sleeping baby. Um, I had in my notes, but you've already brought this up, I was wanting a discussion about the, the CFD so I could understand what all that is about, so you've already got that covered. Um, and that's, that's all I had.
On that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. On that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting for January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Oh, my.